Good morning, everybody. And welcome to this special council meeting on Tuesday, May the third, two thousand and twenty-two. We'll call the meeting to order by resolution. Madam Clerk.
It's moved by Counselor Fraser, seconded by Counselor Armstrong, that the special meeting of the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry be hereby called to order.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion? Carried. Thank you. Adoption of the agenda. Madam Clerk.
It's moved by Counselor Armstrong, seconded by Counselor Gardner, that council approve the agenda.
All in favor of the motion? Carried. Thank you. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest and general nature thereof? Seeing none, we will move into closed session. Madam Clerk, please move.
Moved by Counselor Wirt, seconded by Counselor Warden, that council proceed in camera pursuant to section two thirty-nine, two E of the Municipal Act two thousand and one, litigation or potential litigation including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality, and F, advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. Official plan appeal.
Thank you very much. Pardon me? All in favor of the motion? Carried.
Okay, Madam Clerk, if we can please rise and reconvene.
It's moved by Councillor Gardner, seconded by Councillor Fraser, that council rise from closed session and authorize the Director of Planning Services and Legal Counsel Joshua Moon to implement the recommendations contained in the confidential in-camera memo dated April 28, 2022.
All in favour of the motion. Carried, thank you. And the ratification bylaw, please, Madam Clerk.
Moved by Councillor Fraser, seconded by Councillor Wirt, that bylaw number 5347, being a bylaw to adopt, confirm and ratify matters dealt with by resolution, be read and passed in open council, signed and sealed.
All in favour of the motion. Carried, thank you. And the adjournment resolution.
Moved by Councillor Wirt, seconded by Councillor Armstrong, that council adjourn to the call of the Chair.
All in favour of the motion. Carried, thank you very much. Okay, now, does anybody want a break, a quick break, or we'll move right into the Committee of the Whole? Yes, Mike?
May I have five minutes and fix this if Mr Christie's coming in on leave at 12?
Yes. Five minutes, thank you. Okay, so we're good to go. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to our Committee of the Whole meeting this Tuesday, May the 3rd. Madam Clerk, please call the meeting to order by resolution.
It's moved by Councillor Gardner, seconded by Councillor Warden, that the meeting of the Committee of the Whole of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry be hereby called to order.
Thank you for that. All in favour of the motion? Carried, thank you. And the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
It's moved by Councillor Byvelt, seconded by Councillor Warden, that the agenda be approved as presented.
All in favour of the motion? Carried, thank you. Any disclosure of pecuniary interest in general nature thereof? Seeing none. The approval of the minutes, Madam Clerk.
It's moved by Councillor Warden, seconded by Councillor Gardner, that the minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting held November 25, 2021 be adopted as circulated.
All in favour of the motion. Carried, none opposed, thank you. And we have our first, well, it's a staff report about a delegation. We have Lauren Christie here, who will present the Historic SDG Jail feasibility study. Welcome, Mr Christie.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Greetings from Toronto. Nice to see that people are actually together again. I love that we're heading in that direction. Quick tech question before I get into some of the results of the study with everybody. Am I able to share my screen? Do we know that? Or would you just prefer that I talk? I have a PowerPoint that I would use if we could, and if we can't, I will just talk.
You can share your screen.
Okay, great. Thank you. One second, please.
Kimberly?
Everybody can see that?
The lights?
Everybody okay with that?
That's good. Thank you.
Super, super. Thank you. Okay, I'm not going to keep you too long, and I believe that you all received a copy of the final feasibility study along with the agenda, or hoping that you did. But what I wanted to do this morning was just give a brief overview of some of the things you'll find in the study if you haven't had a chance to look through it yet, as well as leave a few minutes at the end for some questions and answers for those of you who may have some. So, just a little bit background, I know that I talked to you before, but just to remind you, this was undertaken as a feasibility study of the Historic SDG Jail. And the goal at the end of it was to choose a path forward, you know, to suit best the needs of the counties as well as the stakeholders in the county. The process was laid out as a, started out with getting the input of various stakeholders, looking at data from the jail, as well as the various regional tourism authorities and local tourism authorities, looking at travel trends, getting the input from lake attractions, mostly in Ontario, but in some cases outside of Ontario as well, and bring it all together to try to formulate a path forward again, so that hopefully at the end of this, there'll be a move-forward action plan. I would point out that what it is not is an engineering assessment or a budgeting document. I would also like to point out, I put there that a data caveat, what came up in the course of doing the study is that there is a lack of data. And so in some of the parts of the study, although we hope to have more of a quantitative story to share, it is more of a qualitative story to share. And there's some recommendations in the study, sort of pointing out the fact that moving forward, it's always best to have data as part of the decision-making process. And just to let you know, it was not a huge big deal, but it was just a lack of alignment and some missing gaps and holes between the jail as well as the local tourism authority. But I don't think it impedes the results of the study at all. So stakeholder engagement, we reached out, I won't bother reading through everyone here, but we reached out to a number of stakeholders. I did put a tiny asterisk by the Cornwall City Council, although through Cornwall Tourism, we did reach out to them, they did not engage in the process, we tried several times. So they're the only ones that were not fully on, I wouldn't say on board, but just didn't participate. Highlights, it was actually really interesting to talk with all of their various stakeholders. I'll tell you, the views of the jail, it went from everything, from an Airbnb, what they'd like to see, to a mixed martial arts centre. I mean, there was no end to the various ideas. But I would say that the one common thread, without a doubt, is that everybody recognized the historical importance of the jail to the region. There was not one person that didn't value it, which I think is great. Some other highlights, and these are not inclusive, they're all inclusive, there's some others ones in there as well, but just that taxpayers in the counties need to see the value. And the idea of partnering, I think there's a lot of really great opportunities for partnering in the region, and it was really exciting to see how many stakeholders out there would be willing to participate in that, including the Cornwall County Museum, who has teed up to help out this summer and take over some of the tours of the jail for the 2022 season. And then also the opportunities for cross-promotion throughout the region. A real feeling that to become part of the wider region, it would be great to do some cross-promotions in terms of marketing opportunities with the various properties of the St Lawrence Parks Commission, Kingston Penn, et cetera, and you know. And then, of course, overall, talking with your own staffers, of course, amongst others, just the need for a proper engineering assessment to really understand the needs going forward. I think there's no doubt that it's great to have the season moving forward this year, but that eventually there will be need, there will be some infrastructure improvements needed to be done. And in order to choose the best path forward, it needs to go hand-in-hand with a proper engineering assessment, hopefully to be done in the near future. Excuse me. Travel trends, I won't get into a whole lot of detail on these, they are included as an appendix, and there's lots of them with the report. But we reached out to the local tourism and then sort of expanded that out to the Regional Tourism Authority of which you belong, RTO9, Tourism Industry Association of Ontario and Destination Canada. And what was really somewhat not surprising, but with all of the data that there is out there, especially, you know, historical data, but then also as we come through the COVID pandemic and where that points, it really is a domestic tourism focus, which isn't all that different than where you were, but it just pointed to the fact that it's really necessary. I think it's worth noting that in the study, a domestic tourist is anyone is a visitor that comes anywhere from more than 40 kilometres radius, so that's a drive-in tourist for sure. And I also think it's worth noting, I was just at a conference yesterday, and the Tourism Industry Association of Canada was speaking, and they were, you know, again, that it really is domestic. We hear lots of stories on the news these days about, you know, airlines going and hotels being booking and people going, but there is still a lot of trepidation amongst the general travelling public about going internationally. You still have to do a rapid test to go to the United States. There's probably going to be another wave coming in the fall, so there still is, in the short term, 100% domestic focus. And in the long term, for Cornwall, I think that's really where their sweet spot is, even with the Americans that, who eventually, hopefully, will be coming back across the border. They represent a very small fraction of the input into the area. So those, I will leave for that. Supply and demand, again, this was a little bit harder with some of the data there, but some of the takeaways that you'll see in the, in the report, revenues over the years, for the years that were tracked at the jail, largely, the, always seemed to be that it was more than expected in terms of rental and facility, seemed to surpass the expected budget numbers. And that will tie into some of the film location discussion that we have, but even the events as well that had, that were profitable. Very interesting discussions on market value with lake attractions. You'll see in the report that the Cornwall Jail, a lot of people have an impression that it is a very, it is a gem, and that the jail could be, the historic jail could be used for more filming at a much higher rate. In some cases, the Kingston Film Location said they felt that the jail was undervaluing itself by 50 to 75%. The tours, eight to $10 traditionally is what was charged. Again, a feeling amongst some of the St Lawrence Parks Commission properties and other like attractions that the charge could be more, and that people would be willing to pay it, that it's all perception and a little bit of marketing. Filming was a really interesting area to get into. Prior to undergoing this, your staff has already been undertaking discussions with the South East Accelerator Development Fund, Filming Development Fund, which is similar to something they have in the North that has been fantastic for keeping film in Northern Ontario and generating upwards of $100 million in revenue. And so there is, being led by the Kingston Film Office, there is a real push to do that in the area. And you'll see in the report as well, of course, everything is timing and things change. There was an update expected to, on the South East Accelerator Fund by April 30th. Clearly, that date has passed. I did get in touch with the Film Office, and the verbal update that I have is that they still don't have a definitive update. But looking in the proposed budget for the Ontario Conservatives right now, they didn't approve it, but they didn't deny it. And they have put a few carrots in there in terms of revisiting the tax, a tax credit that would be very helpful, as well as a few other minor things. And so the lobby group that they've enlisted has said to them, basically, yeah, it's probably not going to change between now, and of course, there's an election, so there is time, they believe, to spend some time lobbying the MPs and of all the parties, and try and get that into the, into the budget. So they're hopeful that the new budget with the new government, whoever it may be, will include that for the fall in their move forward. So still feeling very hopeful about that. And the other thing that they mentioned is even if that doesn't happen, they are moving forward in the second phase of a filming project they started last year in RTO9. The first phase was to include video and photo library locations in terms of taking the digital assets, and they included the SDG Historic Jail. And they just approved the second phase of this, which will put it all online into a database, with a licensed database, which they hope will be a complement to the Accelerator Fund, but even if not, it will be a benefit. So there's a very long verbal update to where the filming stands. And then the last thing, just on supply and demand, and again, I won't belabor the point now, but you can read about it, probably very important to look at data collection in the future to enable further decisions as we move forward in the future. The input of lake attractions, this was a really fun part of the The input of like attractions, this was a really, uh, fun part of the project for me. Uh, reaching out again, you can see some of the people that we talked to there, uh, a lot of really positive, positive, uh, things were said, um, by all the people that we talked to. Um, I call it in the report, the behind the bars update, and again, I won't go into all of it. Um, but the takeaway from that for me was that actually there's a little bit of a scarcity in Canada, um, in the US, there are lots of, um, jail product, we'll call them, whether they're in the form of museums, tours, or paranormal haunted activities. Uh, in Canada, there's fewer and fewer. The Owen Sound Jail is up for jail for sale, the Dawn Jail has been turned into an administration office along with, uh, for Bridgepoint Health here in Toronto. Um, there are some jails that have done good jobs in terms of, uh, hostels, um, but the Ottawa Hostel is probably going to stop doing tours and just focus on being a hostel. Um, so there's some changes at some of the ones in there, and again, I'll, you can read through, but, uh, just to say that the message there is that what the Cornwall jail has, uh, seems to be unique, uh, and not one hundred percent unique, but there is a scarcity and there is a demand here in Canada, according to some of the other partners. Collaboration and partnering, again, a lot of, uh, excitement and input, uh, about working, uh, with the SDG jail moving forward, uh, whether it's through marketing, co-ops, partnerships, um, cross-promotions, whatever, they're all very interested into it from larger organizations to smaller ones like bike tour companies that would like to to work with. So I think the opportunity, uh, to do things across the region is there. Uh, of course, there's some really great funding opportunities, uh, available, uh, that we dug into, that's also an appendix in the study that you'll see. Cornwall Development Fund, um, Activate My Street, My Main Street, there are different ones in there that could take funding, it just takes time to go in and ask for the grant, so there is funding available. Talked about film productions enough, uh, again, that is a very active thing in the, uh, Kingston Film Office, but they're expanding it all over, uh, RTO nine and making it a regional thing of which, uh, Cornwall can certainly take advantage of. And then one of the really great things about, uh, talking to all these people, uh, is they really felt that, you know, Cornwall, the SDG jail in Cornwall had a great branding, they had a great presence, and and some people sort of felt why ruin a good thing, um, and and just move forward as is and sort of, uh, take what you've got and work it on all the levels, all the things that have been done over the years, the paranormal events, the tours, um, all to highlight something that everyone regards as a really, uh, important and great product, uh, in the area. And last but not least, uh, there was some indication of a of a dedicated body, and whether that's an official partner, uh, like the Cornwall Community Museum will help in this, uh, this summer. Um, but someone just sort of lead some of those grant applications and be the one go-to to for partners who want to reach out and work on, uh, just to have a little bit more focus, whatever path that takes. So, uh, a little bit of final recommendations after all that, and again, there is much more in the report that you can read through, um, but the the first priority, which I didn't put on this slide, which I said, and I'll just emphasize it again, uh, is is just to make sure that moving forward, that there is a an engineering assessment. Again, uh, staff at the jail felt very strongly about this, uh, and of course, in order to move forward, uh, in a progressive way, probably makes sense to undertake it before a final decision is made. Um, two options really floated to the to the top in terms of what would make sense. Um, one is film production, I I I really, that seems to be a place that 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 it's going really strong, there's a lot of money and effort being spent on it, a lot of strong outside partners and advocates, particularly through the Kingston Film Office, which will certain turn turn into an RTO nine thing. Um, but that comes with a caveat, uh, thus the asterisk, uh, and the caveat is just a little bit that although the revenue sometimes can be great, it is also a stream of revenue that is can be ebb and flow, uh, out of your control, um, you know, productions come in, they use you for a year and they get wooed somewhere else and they leave, or whatever the case may be, and also just the size uh, of the jail itself means that it would never be able to accommodate a very, very large production, it would just be part, part of, uh, a a larger production for smaller things, but still very lucrative. Option two, of course, is to capitalize on the established brand, which I think, um, it was interesting, uh, there, it really is a good brand out there, you talk to people who put on, um, certainly the haunted tours and the paranormal activities, uh, they say there's, there's, there's lots of demand for the jail, not demand every day, all day, um, but enough demand so that if you continued in what you're doing and and it was a mix of a historical, uh, building along with some of these events, along with some film production on the side, along with the tours, that it could continue for a very long time due to the uniqueness of its position in the area, uh, and in fact, in Canada, um, and and build off those partnerships with things that um, are like, but, uh, in Kingston are like, but are happy to partner, so. Worth considering partnering, tracking the data, upping your pricing and some good communication and marketing behind, uh, behind it, whatever you do, uh, whichever option you choose, and I think that, uh, I think that there is two, two very good options, uh, put forward for for the jail. So, that was a very long-winded speech on my part, so I just wanted to, um, just wanted to see if there was any questions on the report, if anybody had a chance to read it or any thoughts, questions they had for me before we we sign off.
Thank you for that, Lauren, uh, yes, we'll go into questions, uh, councillor Gardner.
Thanks, Warden, uh, thank you for your presentation, I I have a couple of questions. Um, some of them may come across as comments, uh, but comment on them as you wish. I'm just curious as to when I was reading through the, um, uh, tourism spots that you had, uh, spoken to, uh, didn't see the Lost Villages Museum in, uh, South Stormont, uh, they have a paranormal paranormal program, so it would have been interesting to to get some feedback from from that. Um, this is a tricky, we're in a tricky location, because when, um, it was online that we had had this discussion about the historical jail, um, lots of folks that reside in Cornwall actually view it as a Cornwall property. So it was, don't take away our jail, don't, uh, go there, so partnerships would be key. Um, but in the tourism sector, that's a, that's a tight, uh, relationship only because you're competing for funding, right? If you go down the funding model, so just a couple of comments with that, um, the other thing that was, uh, interesting, um, was the, uh, high input from the Saint Lawrence Parks Commission, um, which I somewhat viewed as comparing apples to oranges. Um, they receive, uh, heavy, uh, subsidy from the province in 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 the amount of millions and millions of dollars. Um, and I know that there was comments about, uh, you know, how he- high their admission fee would go and whether or not people felt that it was satisfactory, um. Because of our local, uh, residents that will, uh, potentially come, I can tell you that at the Parks Commission, not all the local folks were thrilled with the price hike, so I guess it depends how you attract, but interesting report, wish that there had been maybe a broader, uh, broader reach, but, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Lauren, can you unshare your screen, please?
Oh, yes, sorry, yeah, absolutely, stop, it's right about that.
Other, uh, questions or comments? Okay, councillor Biveldsen, councillor Fraser.
Thank you, Warden, um, I'm not going to specify in the report, I know that, you know, this is something we debated, and I did miss the meeting, their county council did have a discussion with Lauren on on its next steps, but, um, I guess my main concern is is where we're going to go with a building that we haven't done an engineering assessment on, that there's been various opinions at this table from us and staff that parts of it are good and parts of it aren't. Uh, we've converted the old, the the, the old house into office. That's the big step we think we missed that we should have at least known what we were going into, I don't, I don't have an issue with redoing all buildings for practical purposes, we did it in Mooresburg at the South Unnest Municipal Centre. Uh, however, I know in going through that whole process, I had not one report, but two reports from two separate engineers that told us that building was feasible to do what we wanted to do with it, still spent over four million dollars to fix it. But at least it's something now that we can use as as usable space. This is something that I know tourism is tourism and it all tends to be a little short-term stuff, but, um, if we're going to devote money into an old building, we need to know a a good path forward, and the first to that path is knowing that you've got a building that you can work with, you're not going to spend significant amount of of, you know, county dollars to bring it up to grade, if we get grants, fair enough, this was all granted, so that's at least a good step, but, um, you know, some of the options that we're getting presented today are are quote-unquote fluffy options that you may not be able to to, you you're hearing hanging your hat on something that may or may not work. So, um, going forward, you know, I I'm be cautious first, get figure out what we're going to do with the old building, make sure it's good. And from my understanding, there's two parts, a good part, an older part, and then a a an addition that may be questionable, but, um, I don't see enough meat in here to say to me that this is going to be a good long-term project without a lot figuring out exactly how that building can be able to handle it. Nice to have old, and I've never denied old, but the old has to be something that can still practically work within what we want to do in SDG, and, you know, the city, city may not directly be part of it, but, you know, it is in the city, so, you know, I I'll I'll make some comments later on tourism in in Cornwall and SDG, but, um, it's not bringing people to SDG, it's bringing people to city Cornwall, so keep that all in mind.
Uh, thank you, uh, I I'm going to go to, um, Tara in a second, but, uh, your your point's well taken, um, councillor Bivelds. In retrospect, perhaps we should have done the engineering study first and then looked at the uses, I don't know, but, uh, obviously we need to do that, uh, councillor Fraser, do you mind if I go to Tara before I go to you? Are you, are you responding specifically to councillor Bivelds? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madame Warden, and thank you councillor Bivelds for bringing up some very strong points. So as staff, we've had multiple dis- discussions after this feasibility report was produced and going into it as well, and I do agree that the feasibility study that has been done, it is valuable to have it done first because it identifies potential needs for the jail. So if we bring in the film industry, they have separate needs than visitors have, they might require more electricity, more plugs, they might require better lighting, as opposed to a visitor will have different lighting needs, if we're looking at it using it as a hostel or a B and B, it's lighting that's intended for sleep and for people staying over for that one-night experience of I survived the ghosts, you know, or whatever the marketing piece is. So having an understanding of potential needs does help lead us down the right path. Our recommendation to you today, and it would be a recommendation in form of a question, would be with the dwindling COVID funding that we have left, we do have the capacity right now, and I've had this discussion with C A O Simpson, to come to you and ask, would you like us to bring forward a staff report with some recommendations looking at the feasibility of doing an engineering study this year with the COVID funding in anticipation of being able to potentially then apply for red funding in the future? So through the Rural Economic Development Fund, we could potentially qualify for extensive rehabilitation funding for this building, depending on the needs that are identified in that report. Around twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen, an engineering study was conducted on the building, it very much heavily focused on the outside, so it was looking at the parjing, the windows, the doors, the parking lots, the ramps. On the interior, it looked pretty much exclusively at, um, where it had dripped, so where roofs had failed and leakages had come in. With N as well, it had also looked at the HVAC system. The features that we're looking at are more consumer-based, so we have to know what is the state of the walls, what is the state of the mold. We had a mold issue last year, it was largely remediated, um, in chatting with the specialists who came through, they can, you can never prove why mold is caused, but they did state the fact that, you know, we were closed for two years, there was no airflow. Typically, the doors open and close throughout the summer, we have a lot of guests coming through, it aids in airflow, it changes things. That was not the case, we have large humidifiers downstairs dealing with that, but we need to know greater causes, greater steps. So, as I said, our recommendation would be to move, moving forward, that, as you say, councillor Bivelds, is the needed step to figure out how do we continue to operate, what are the things that we don't know that are hiding in the walls that might prevent something later on? What are the accessibility issues that we need to be, um, proactive about? And as well to your point about, you know, being a part of Cornwall, we would be eligible for the Cornwall Tourism Development Fund, which could potentially give us twenty-five thousand dollars a year for three years, so the maximum that could come from that specific fund would be an additional seventy-five thousand dollars potentially. So it does put us in a very good position to be able to first steps, find out what is wrong that we don't know already, and as well as a few known factors that we have to look at, such as washrooms and doors. And secondly, what are the funding options to potentially offset some of that cost? Some of the other elements that Lauren had mentioned includes things like the lack of data. We have very little survey data across Cornwall counties or the parks of Saint Lawrence or our partners in terms of where are the tourists coming from, how long are they here, what are they doing? So as part of this process, but separately, I have reached out to all of those partners, we're looking at creating an identical tourism survey this year so that we can have shared data collection that will be used across the board. We'll all ask the same questions so that when we feed it back through the GIS system that we're using with Sabina in our own department's support, that we'll actually know more about our visitors and will be able to better track the things that Lauren identified as being a major challenge for us. And by us, I also include Cornwall and our partners, this is a shared issue that we all face as a region. We're also looking at bringing in the Cornwall Community Museum, so they won't be running the jail tours this year, but the difference is, is that we've, as a part of this process, Lauren identified a very close possibility of working with their museum curators to actually curate exhibits for Doors Up in Ontario later this year. So with that piece, we'll be able to have a more authentic historical approach. And it's very important, I mean, as as hosts and curators of this jail, it's a huge task to know all the knowledge of the jail, and that is a task that are suited to a historian to work with us, whether as a contractor or as a consultant or however that relationship may evolve. But we've definitely identified a number of valuable partners, and to your point, um, councillor Gardner as well, you know, for sure, the Lost Villages Museum and our other area museums, we would be working with them on those types of exhibits, and they're already working with the same partners who do paranormal tours. So the paranormal tours currently done in the jail are the same tours done at the Lost Villages Museum, at Sir John Johnson House, and at the um, Glengarry Pioneer Museum, as well as a few other assets where they've identified ghosts, including, I hate to say it, um, Madame Warden, but they did identify that the chair you're sitting in is probably one of the most haunted elements of the building.
Oh, for crying out loud. Okay, thank you, Tara. Councillor Fraser, you have a question?
Uh, thank you, Madame Warden, uh, yes, to Lauren, um, could you just for, maybe just strictly for my benefit, revisit, uh, your comments about the stakeholders from Cornwall, uh, specifically Cornwall City Council, and their interest in, uh, in in being, uh, as I, I think in early days in this discussion felt that, uh, being situated in Cornwall, Cornwall City Council and Cornwall needs to be, uh, a a big stakeholder in this as a as a will draw tourism to the area, as has been mentioned about the waterfront and, uh, cycling tours that take place in Cornwall, so if you could revisit that for me, or or maybe for all of us, it's it's just, uh, I I need to have a better understanding of their desire to be a a large stakeholder. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, I I I I can't comment on the level of desire. All I can say is that I reached out and have worked very closely with Cornwall Tourism, um, excellent team there, uh, many, many discussions, including a a live visit when I first came down last September, and they're very keen uh, on working with the jail and and see the value in it, and so they instructed me to work through them, uh, to be in touch with council, and through, uh, them, we decided that the best way to move forward would be a survey. Um, we developed the survey together to make sure we got the right inputs and questions from council, and, uh, they took it to council as is my understanding, uh, at least two times, and I just, we just didn't get any engagement. I was not provided a reason why, uh, we just didn't get any engagement, so.
Okay, thank you for that, uh, Tim, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Ward Williams, yeah, just following up on councillor, uh, Bivelds and Gardners and, um, Tara's comments, we we talked extensively about doing an an engineering study, and we we thought that it would be appropriate to to use some of the existing COVID money to, uh, inform, uh, what we might want to do there, so as Tara mentioned, if we could, uh, if if the committee, uh, as you said today, if you're okay with us, um, doing a little bit of research on that and bringing something back to you to to take a look at in terms of cost and and funding sources and things like that, we would be happy to do that, because as we've mentioned, that's the, there's two integral pieces of this. There's the feasibility study that we've we've got, uh, before us today, and then, and obviously, we need to know what's doable over there in terms of accessibility and washrooms and things like that, if we're really going to grow it, um, to a point where where it could possibly be, so um, that would be kind of, I think the immediate next step would be, uh, taking a look at what we what we could do there in the context of, uh, having an engineer look at at that, and then once we have that document, having a robust discussion around, okay, um, you know, these are the elements we can do there, here's the engineering constraints, put them together and then come forward with a comprehensive plan, and that'll also give us a little bit of time to of time to talk about, excuse me, the partnerships, particularly with the city that have been, been brought up. So I'll just add that as a comment, Madam Warden.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Gardner, and then Counselor Armstrong.
Thanks, Warden Williams. I think that definitely seeing how much it's going to cost to make that building is kind of a good idea. I think too, if we're going to go down this path, historically in Cornwall, we've had tourism jointly with Cornwall and SD and G, because if we think about this, so if we invest, and I sit here as a counselor of SD and G, if we invest a lot of money in creating, whether it's a film production location or whatever, we are directly impacting the city of Cornwall as far as accommodation stays. We may be taking away from the county somewhat if we do that. So, and I'm not saying collaboration's not a great thing, I think it's a fantastic thing, but as the boarders set up now, we have extensive duplication on these files. You know, we've just heard that our consultants spend a lot of time with, with their tourism folks and stuff like that, and we don't actually have a formal partnership in, in place, like there has not been any discussion. And I understand there's a lot of history about we were together, that we're not together, then we're together again, and now we're not together. So I, I think that needs to also be part of this, because with the art center opening up, just down on Pitt, there's, there's definitely benefits, and the benefits weigh heavily in the city of Cornwall's favor. So I, I definitely would like to see a more formalized partnership, and I know we're going back and then forth and then back again, but the time and energy of our staff to manage something that is located in the city of Cornwall, whenever we have industry, tourism industry people in our counties that need assistance, I think that also needs to be recognized.
Thank you. Counselor Armstrong?
Thank you, Madam Warden. I think, I mean, it's a little bit repetitious at this point, but without a doubt, we have to do the feasibility study, we, you would need to have the engineering study. I mean, I think that this council and the next council is going to need to, going to need to have a full understanding of what it's going to take to get the building in a usable state, that, that you would be proud, or at least find acceptable, to invite people in, whether they're paying or not. So what it boils down to in my mind is, is each and every council member here is going to have to decide where their stomach and their, and their ability or willingness to, to accept the taxpayers being on the hook for X amount of respect to history. And history should be respected, but, and, and I'm not suggesting a number or anything, but I think each of us will need to have to come to where our comfortability is, to say that the taxpayers of SD and G are going to put X number of hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, into the building over the course of a lifetime, for how much historical reference, if we're the sole partners. And, and I think that Counselor Gardner is correct, it, it's, it has to have input and heavy input from the city of Cornwall, because they will benefit exponentially from us doing something and making this into a real viable product. Which, by the way, we have to also be aware of, because it is taxpayers' dollars, it's, there's many good things that are suggested in here, thoughts of, you know, one-third again, increasing the, the income for, for prices, for taking a tour, for doing something else, for having this, for having that. If you look at the actuals, if we were to triple the actuals from 2020, it would have paid for less than, I think, one, one-half of what the roof cost was going to be. So that's something that everybody's got to keep in mind. There are great ideas, but again, put it in context, if you were to raise 300% of what the income was in 2020, we still couldn't fix the roof. So we went through this in North Dundas and, and chose to go down the expensive path, and I don't think we, we are unhappy about it now, but we did it with our old town hall. It was a project that was supposed to get that building, and it is a historical building, and it was worth saving, certainly voted for it. But we are, on a $70,000 project, we are well over half a million dollars in, in the last number of years, and we have one real main tenant in there. So there are things to be cautioned, because again, we're, we, we need to give a nod to history, but there has to be some sort of limit as to what the taxpayers are asked to do, so that we can have a few tours, so we can have something. I would, I would think, from the outlook of this, specifically targeting something like the film industry may be the best way to go, because if they pay a lot, if they do use it for a year, if they use it for six months even, I assume, little bit of understanding of what they paid in Chesterfield to do, to do the one movie that they did there, those revenues in six months would far outweigh the number of families that we have coming through, paying eight bucks a pop or 16 bucks a pop, and it's, the faucet can't just be turned on, would be it. So, I mean, that would be my one caution to council members.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Christie, I have a question for you. Let's say that the, the, the building, or the buildings that, that are, we're talking about, the jail, the new, you know, the really old one and then the not-so-old one, let's say they were in fine condition, that we weren't talking about leaky roofs and, you know, questionable condition of the building itself. Would the, the newer portion, what would, how would you assess the, the tourism asset of the newer part of the jail? Like, is it, would you consider it a tourism asset, the newer part?
I actually, I actually would, and that's not just me personally, that is input from people that I talk to that have like attractions, from the film production folks, you know, however you want to qualify that as a tourism asset, but the, you know, the haunted overnights and all of those aspects, there is still some interest in the addition, the newer part of the old jail, absolutely, is the feedback that I got.
Okay, that's interesting, thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Byvelds.
Thank you, Warden. One point, and I, and, yeah, we can debate on doing the, the engineering study, and I think that, you know, that's a good idea to do. One thing we could look at, if we're hesitant of spending municipal dollars to do anything there, and it'll depend on what we perceive as revenue sources, is allow friends of the jail to lease it and have at it. And we done it in South Dundas on two buildings. It hasn't cost municipality any money, except for making sure there's insurance on our side in case something goes wrong. But we have two groups looking at, A, fixing an old municipal building in Brinson and wanting to turn it into what they think is a usable space in, in that village, and then in Village of Eyrequad, there's an old house called the Forward House, built back in the early 1800s. We've had two engineering studies, not one, two, that have told us we had to spend half a million dollars on it, and we balked, and a friends group came along and said, they'll take it over, and they have. So that's an option we can look at, depending on how, you know, the study that we do do looks at it, and then really seriously thinking, okay, do you really think this film thing's going to take off? Because I see that's the only big revenue source. Tinkling people in through the door, I don't see that as a, as a good possibility. If we have to spend half a million dollars or a million dollars on the building to make sure it's where it has to be, I'd have a challenge thinking that's the right thing, way to spend money, but I haven't seen it yet, and I think I should do that, and then we can go from there. But just an option to throw on the table.
Okay, thank you. So does the, is the consensus around the room that you would like to see a staff report come back, giving us options on engineering then? Counselor McGillis?
Thank you, Warden. Another option I didn't see in the report was the possibility of just leasing it out to any potential businesses if we don't move forward with the other, you know, we all know that there is a historic value there, but there is also an option to lease it out to any potential business that can utilize the building for, for other uses, and what we were hearing today too as well, so that's another option, I never heard yet.
Yep, similar to...
I'm so sorry, oh, sorry, I just, I just wanted to just point it if I may, and I'm sorry if I'm out of point of order here, just, just very quickly on the last two comments, just to say, there are many options, and many options were, of course, discussed, including, as you mentioned, the leasing. Not exhaustive by any stretch of the imagination, but I did talk to developers, such as the Weaving Basket Group, who are present in Cornwall, and there was, there was not a lot of uptake from various partners, people who have tried to enter into Friends of types of situations before, there was not a lot of feedback that that would be a very viable option, and that there's a, wasn't a lot of money floating around for someone else to come in and do that type of thing, other than the film production thing. So I just to flag, there are tons of options out there, of course, the reason the report flags those top two is because based on the stakeholder, based on the input of like attractions, those were the two that seemed the most viable. And again, always, of course, in conjunction, whatever, whatever happens with an engineering assessment. Just wanted to point that out, thank you.
Thank you for that, Counselor Wart.
Through you, Madam Chair, you know, I think it's, I think it's fantastic, we've got all these options in front of us, but they're all predicated on numbers, and I think we need the staff report to build that decision on, and that's the first step that's going to lead us to finding something, what of a solution. And I don't think the option of doing nothing is in, in play, there has to be something done here that is going to be done to, you know, advance our vision. So I would suggest that, that we allocate the money through the, through the COVID funding and get this report, and then those numbers are going to take us a long way in deciding the next step.
Very good. Okay, Counselor Gardner, and then if we could wrap this up, please.
Thanks, Madam Warden. I, I like Counselor Byvelds' idea with the Friends group, and I think that doing the engineer's report is important. I would also say that I would caution that if the number comes back huge, which it will, that people make the predetermination that it would be too much for a Friends group, because I can say that the Friends of GTR 1008 are now the proud owners of the St. Lawrence Parks Commission engine, baggage car, and passenger car, and that estimate from an engineer came in well over a million dollars, and it is absolutely something that a group of Friends, Friends group can take over and actually do quite well, because they're able to apply for grants that government organizations are not able to.
Good point, thank you. So if, just a quick show of hands, if you'd like to see a staff report moving us forward to, with an engineering plan. Okay? All right, we're good to go. Thank you very much, everybody, and thank you, Mr. Christie, for your presentation.
Thank you so much, have a great day, everybody.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Okay, moving right along, 6.2, we have the May 2022 Economic Development and Tourism Update. Should we take a break? We do have lunch today, so we will be breaking at noon. Do you want a quick break before Tara does her update? Okay, just five or 10. Yeah, we'll break. Yeah, we'll break. Okay, thank you, everyone. We're back, we're back at it. We're now at the May 2022 Economic Development and Tourism update. So as Tara goes through this, I've asked her to, when she finishes one segment of her report, to pause, because I'd like, if, if possible, I'd like county council members to feel free to ask questions throughout the report, since there is so much information there. I, I'd like the opportunity for a good discussion. As we're going through this report, please ask yourself if, if these priorities that, that Tara and her group have been working on, if they, if they fit in, if they fit well with your local pri, your local economic development and tourism priorities. And also whether or not the broader economic development goals of SD and G are being fulfilled. So, you know, this is the opportunity that everyone will have to input and to think about those priorities and how well they fit. So feel free to ask questions throughout. And please go ahead, Tara.
Thank you, madam Warden. So as you're aware, I started in this position last March. So I've been here just over a year now. And I've had the time to really engage and learn more about what the position is and to kind of settle into what are the priorities based on previous strategic plans and ongoing issues that are facing our local businesses and organizations. So with the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, business retention and expansion, it's always the core priority for economic development. It's, you know, if you look at where you spend your time, you can be chasing pipes, you know, you could be going after smoke stacks and trying to bring in industries, which we're always going to be trying to do. I, I do not discount the fact that we're trying to attract new business. But we have a lot of business here, and we have a lot of business that's growing, it's expanding, it's struggling, it's suffering, it's succeeding, they're retiring. So a lot of our focus is spent on business retention and expansion because of the fact that it's a better goal for us to protect what we have and to grow those assets. And it's a far more achievable goal than spending a huge amount of our resources on going out to Alberta, for instance, to attend a convention to try and attract business. We do that naturally, right? We promote our parks, we're promoting any of our assets. Right now, one of the biggest struggles we have is just the fact that in terms of site selection, we actually have very little inventory. So we've had a very big fire sale of properties. As you're all aware, real estate has exploded throughout COVID. And I'll go through the real estate section later on in this document. But just to state that industrial real estate has been as active as your residential real estate. So in most of your municipalities, a lot of your municipal properties have sold throughout this period. A lot of our individual assets have also sold. So individuals who had properties that could be used for large scale commercial, for large scale industrial, which is very much a large part of why Peter and his team in the planning department are right now working on the growth and population study. So we influence some of the economic factors in those studies to see where we can evolve to and where we can grow and how the community can grow. But we look at it from a lot of different perspectives. So sitting in my chair, it's looking at, well, what do we have to sell, for one, and making sure that we have a place to sell it. So we have a site selection tool that was added to the county's website. And that same tool can be put identically on all of your websites. So it's a feed in that we purchased so that any properties that you have for sale in your municipality, if they are commercial or industrial or manufacturing in nature, either for lease or for sale, we want to promote them. So we want to make sure that we're keeping that door open so that if we have assets to sell or lease, we're active and we're engaged and we're advertising them. And I work with the EDOs and with various members of your municipalities to try and promote that. We're also working on adding an automated MLS tool. So we're currently working with the Canadian Real Estate Board to try and access direct MLS data. So that if somebody has listed with one of our partner real estate agents their commercial property, it will automatically appear on that site. But it will also give us the ability to type in the information. If we have a property in one of our municipal parks for sale, we can input it on our own. So working with businesses, we work with a number of different things. Through COVID, our relationship has evolved dynamic dramatically. So business retention and expansion, it's just essentially a way of saying, we call them and we ask, how are things going? We respond to inquiries directly from the businesses. And you'll see, it's a lengthy list. This is just a snapshot. Many of the businesses here, I either worked with them on the regional incentives program, on tourism programs, on how are you doing programs. Some of them are new, some of them are growing, some of them are succeeding their business. And it's just trying to figure out what are their needs. I recently had an interview with Eastern Ontario Business Journal. And it was talking about what is economic development? For us, a lot of economic development is acting as a concierge for our businesses to find out what they need. We're not always the fund, we're not always the source. But we work for them to engage and figure out who are the other partners that can help them. And then we bring those partners to them. So it's a lot of heavy engagement with the partner agencies. And you'll see that a large part of what I've been doing is actually engaging with some of those other partners to the benefit of our businesses and our other social groups. So in addition to supporting direct business throughout the counties, we also support a lot of non-for-profits. We support a lot of individuals working on other initiatives. So to that point, it would be working with our community museums to help them identify Trillium Grants, to help them identify funding opportunities as they come up. How do we do this? Sometimes they call us and they're looking for help. Sometimes we call them because we saw something that we know identifies a business. We always make it as accessible as possible for this information. I've initiated a new newsletter. So we have a newsletter going out through my department. I believe that you all should be getting it if it doesn't hit your spam filters. And those are going out, not on a specific date of the month, but they're going out as large grants or other opportunities arise. So it's, they're information based as it evolves. Typically, they're going to be at least once a month. We post lots of stuff on social media. So I work with our communications officer. I send him daily information from the province, from the region, from our partners, so that we can post it through social and so that people know what's going on and about grant programs as they arise. We've been modifying our technology. So we've worked on updates to the, to our county's website, as well as our other websites. One of the ways that we're working on that is controlling our brand. So we previously had made the decision that SDG Tourism would be branded as Where Ontario Began. But we also don't want another business with the SDG Tourism website, which was the purchase, why we have purchased extra domain names to redirect them. So that if somebody types it in, SDG Tourism, they're going to hit our website, regardless of how we brand it. We're working on a number of different elements. So in addition to talking to businesses about grants and assistance and programs that are available to them, and it's a very long list of programs, it's evolving every day. It has been a good time in terms of opportunities to recover. So with the COVID-19 pandemic have come a lot of rapidly evolving programs to assist them in each phase of the pandemic. It's a very complicated route for small business to navigate. So the majority of the businesses that are located in SD and G, we have great success stories of companies with 500 or more employees. But 90% of the businesses in SD and G are single owned and operated enterprises. So if you own a business and you're the only one who works there, or maybe you have one or two other people who assist you, it's a lot of knowledge for them to figure out, which is why we've weighed heavily on partner organizations to assist them in figuring out how to go through this process. We work with the Cornwall Business and Enterprise Centre, which offers a number of services to help them identify how to actually deal with the grants that they got. So one of the things that we had worked with, I had reached out after we received a number of inquiries from some of our chambers asking for help. So we had set up a meeting with the Cornwall Business and Enterprise Centre where Andrew Segay, he's a local accountant who has an affiliation with the Cornwall Business and Enterprise Centre more as a consultant, he offered his time for free. And he did a session so that they can go through how much money you need to pay back your loan if you received the government funded loan, how to actually apply the grants to your taxes, how to go through those steps. So it's identifying some of the needs that more globally our businesses need and trying to target sessions or consultations with them to help them through those phases. So you'll see that we have a lot of new businesses. And we have been very fortunate that throughout the pandemic, we have industries that are based in food. We have a lot of industries that are based in construction or technology. We have a lot of larger industries that have thrived during COVID. Our small businesses have not. So they have been the ones that have needed more support in terms of responding. But equally, new businesses need a lot of support because they don't even know which municipality they're in in some case. I talked to a gentleman who moved to South Glengarry, but he was totally confused because he also pays taxes to North Glengarry. And it was just sitting with him and figuring out which municipality do you actually live in, because he actually lives in both. And then explaining, who are the neighbors? Who are the other businesses that can support him? Who are the other agencies that can support him? This one individual in particular has purchased the largest number of tourism information signs of anyone who has come before him. So I speak to the alpaca farm that is now in South Glengarry, who just purchased, I believe, 11 tourism information signs. Because he came to our area from Niagara and he said, I'm going to make my business a success. My business was a success in Niagara. And he says that he's never lived anywhere like South Glengarry. He loves it, he loves the people, he loves the warmth and the reception that he received from SD and G. Because he's working with businesses throughout the county to grow his new business that he chose to locate here during a global pandemic. So we work with these companies to help them get their footing and find out who can help them grow their business. In terms of advocacy and support, I've worked on a number of different initiatives. Some of these typically with advocacy, it's based on situations that are arising within the counties. Often, it's with the support of the mayors who've come forward or staff members who have asked for assistance. But sometimes it's directly from the businesses themselves. So I've been working with mayor Wirt.
Tara, I'm just going to stop you there. I, I just, just take a pause after each segment. So with regards to business retention and expansion, which Tara just went through, are there any questions or comments? Go ahead, councillor.
Yeah, Tara, I think you're doing a fantastic job. And I think what you're proposing to add to the website will only enhance for, for local businesses. Personally speaking, I called you for a personal issue and you were fantastic. And I've learned something from you and I've shared it with other business owners in the area. So I think you're doing a great job. And I think good things are going to come.
Thank you.
And councillor Gardner, and then councillor McGillis.
Thanks, Warden. I just have a couple of questions. And it's only because we sit at different tables where we talk about budget, right? And the rate paper, rate payers often have comments about staffing and that type of thing. So how would you describe to a resident that's concerned about duplication? Because if we, if you live in a municipality that has an active economic development officer, and they also recognize the fact that we have one at the county level? How, how would you answer, you know, if they're saying, well, you know, I don't know who to talk to, or why do we have two? Or is it confusing if they talk to you first and then don't realize the resources at the municipal level? Because it's always about, you know, efficiency and using the staff appropriately. So how, how would you answer that question for duplication?
I would say that in terms of duplication, it goes back to numbers. So each municipality has one individual designed for economic development. And at the county, we have one, specific to economic development, plus I work with Karina, of course, our tourism coordinator. So with a group of three people, we're representing tens of thousands of businesses. So I would say, just if you break it down to the numbers, for sure, we work collaboratively. So typically, if I speak to a business in South Randaz, I include Rob on the email and I say, by the way, Rob's a member of your team. And here's all the other teams. So one of the biggest things that I do is e-introductions. So I'll meet with a business, new or old, and you have conversations with them. And you're not always going to tell them the same thing. I might go in there and they might cry to me, like they might be in tears and telling me how COVID has killed their business. Rob might go into the same business and they might not tell Rob about that. They might tell Rob that, well, you know, my sister's starting a business. And sometimes it's just a matter of working collaboratively together to support the business and not always on necessarily the same exact element. It's also a matter of, with the resources that we have, they might approach me through regional incentives. They might see one of our ads. And it's a company that we didn't even know existed, because we don't have a business, our businesses aren't required to register anywhere. The big guys, you know, you notice a factory. If you have a contractor working at other house, you might not know that they're actually a business. So it's just a matter of, I would say that sometimes it just goes down to the pure numbers of how many people can a single individual actually reach out to in a year versus if you have two different players coming from two different directions, working collaboratively together so that you share the knowledge. It's very important that the municipality not be left out of any of those major conversations. But it opens doors that might not have opened. And sometimes it just gives you two different individuals that might, you know, somebody might click better on something and
Different perspective.
A different perspective and a different program. So I share information on the programs. But as I said, there are, at this point, So I share information on the programs, but as I said, there are, at this point, we have dozens of new programs coming out on a regular basis. So Rob might be more informed about one that I don't even know about versus I might have three others that I've just heard about through my contacts. And I do share them with EDOs, right? Like, I'm a content provider, so my goal is to send information out. How much can everybody absorb?
Oh, for sure. But keep in mind, you have six municipalities you have to look at with two people, whereas the local EDO has one municipality with one person. So most municipalities have probably created their economic development officer position to give that kind of one-on-one contact with the local, you know, that local flavor. So it's just questions that, you've answered it great, but people will ask, right? Because that's a big concern, is just duplication and cost effectiveness, right? You don't want to pay the bill twice for the same service. You definitely want to have, if you've got individual bills and the expectation should be that that one is providing one type of service and then the second one is providing the different complementary service, if you will.
I would totally agree. And to that point, I would also state that we often do go in with county goals, right? So with the municipality representing them, and as well as our other agencies, so we do have other support agencies. We work with the BDC, which is a loan agency. We work with representatives from ACC Futures. We work with JobZone, we work with GIG on employment factors. We work with the federal and provincial representatives. So we are all visiting in different ways, but we are also going with different priorities. So when I talk to the businesses, often it is an allegiance to the regional incentives program. And then we'll speak to them about the other reinforcing shared pieces. But it is to say that often there is very specific regional incentives or a regional perspective that we're working with them on. I might get a call and it's actually something that would be more suited to Ben of, it's a business, but they're upset because the road in front of their house is a county road and it's cracked and somebody just broke their car on it. And it's a matter of relaying that back. I know it would never happen, Ben. But it's a matter of figuring out which county department, because we're also the department of other things, you know? If somebody's not sure where it belongs, it typically goes to economic development to figure out. You know, if somebody calls with an inquiry of, I mean, I've had everything from people seeing little flags that somebody's doing water work and they're calling me going, "I'm sure that they're putting in Bell." Or you tell me they're putting in Bell, and you have to phone the departments and find out, "No, they're not putting in Bell, you're getting a new water line." It's a terrible thing to have somebody be disappointed that they're getting a new water line, but it's the virtue of general inquiries, because general inquiries can be very general or very concise. You might have somebody who, as I said, sees a newspaper ad about the RIP program and calls specific to that. So I guess it is a wraparound way of saying that, yes, we do have duplication, but it's not duplication of necessarily the same exact service. It's duplication of people there to help, but they are all part of a package deal with different priorities of what they're going to help the business with.
I just want to ensure that, in a broader sense, how I see it, is that SDNG economic development would be the regional, so attracting people to the region. And then it is handed off to the more local, once they make their decision where they're going to, where they're going to land, right? Because I'd hate to see, you know, any of us, our municipal dollars are so tight. So if we've made an investment in one department, we want to make sure that that investment is being utilized as well as can be. And we also want to make sure that it's not a case of jack-of-all-trades, master-of-none, because when you're defining yourself as economic development tourism, then that's where it needs to be focused in, right?
Okay, thank you, councillor McGillis.
Thank you, Warden. I just wanted to thank you very much, Tara, for what you're doing right now. And, you know, I'm glad that we hired you for this job, because you are, I'll echo what councillor Warden said, what a great job you're doing. And also, working with other economic development officers within the, you know, SDNG. You know, we have a website too, of course, in every other municipality. So everything that we can put on the county website, we can put on our website too for, to make sure that the information is being shared, you know, throughout the, throughout SDNG. It's important that, for example, when you said you were going to promote properties, I like that idea, because, you know, everyone needs to know what's going on out there and what properties are available, any commercial, industrial, or even properties for smaller businesses that they're going to sell or whatever. I think it's important that we get it out there, because we need to do everything we can to help anybody in small business at this time, because a lot of people, you know, are hurting and the businesses are hurting too. And lots of jobs were lost over the last couple of years. Have you looked at doing anything about, we have to find, so municipalities that are experiencing a lot of growth, industrial or residential, which I know in North, at North Gundas, North Stormont, especially South Stormont, you're looking at the, just in the industry alone, you're looking at the jobs that were going to be coming. They're going to need land, we're going to need land for commercial properties. And we're looking, reaching out for consultants so that they come back with a kind of a report to the administration, bring back a report to council with how we're going to move forward, because we can't just sit back and let things happen. We have to ensure that there's good planning for all these things that are coming. So, I mean, that's part of what you're saying in terms of how we're going to plan together and make sure that things are planned right and correctly, so that we can move forward and know exactly how we're going to foster these things. Because I know there's a lot of people talking about, you know, the growth that's going to happen and the housing costs and prices right now. So I don't think it's going to get any better in terms of costs of housing in this area. I think it's going to increase because there's going to be more demand. So I think that's why we have to make sure that we're experiencing and looking forward to doing the right planning for that reason. So what's your thoughts on that?
Certainly. So first off, thank you councillor McGillis. So I would state with the fact that I think that you're exactly right. I think that the work that's been done by our planning department is essential right now, and we do support a lot of that documentation. So I've gone through some of those pieces with Peter Young, our planner, and I know it's more his wheelhouse in terms of coming up with that planning document of the growth in population. But the information that we're seeing is that, you're right, like it's the same information we're hearing from those who are inquiring about setting up business in SDNG. And that is part of the job, right? It's attracting and growing and retaining, getting them. And one of the challenges that we have right now is just identifying properties for them as they come through, because we do have a very light inventory of available space. We have the advantage of Avenue 31 in your own backyard, being one of the up-and-comings. We have other parks and other pieces throughout. But it's identifying, well, where will, where would future growth happen and what type of future growth might it be? And where will the workers live is a major issue for us right now. So I am working with a number of employers and with the economic development officers in the municipalities as well, at looking at, well, how do we house people? We have companies that are bringing in foreign workers, we have them bringing in people from Montreal, people from Ottawa, they're bringing them in from anywhere that they can attract new employees, because our businesses are growing. And it's not a bad problem, but it is problematic in that our housing is not always available for the type of employees that they have. So if they're hiring executives, they stand a better chance at finding a house right now with the rising cost of housing. But we have a shortage of apartments, we have a shortage of rentals of all kinds, we have a shortage of housing of virtually all kinds. And these are challenges right now for employers who are trying to grow their businesses. They do need to have somewhere for those employees to live. And we recognize that a lot of projects are in the works. So there's a lot of development that's happening across the counties. We do have a lot of new housing that's breaking ground or in the process or in discussion or zoning or various pieces along the way. Some of it's going to be available imminently, some of it's longer term. How is the costing of those properties? In terms of apartments, I know I've seen a few new apartment complexes go up in the last year, and we have some beautiful new apartment complexes in the counties. How many of the workers working in the plants can afford $2,000 to $2,500 a month towards their rental accommodation? And that has become an issue, because that is the new price point. They're $1,500 to $2,500 a month is the price that I'm seeing for most local apartments that are, and I speak to the brand-new ones that are being constructed right now, not necessarily to all of the inventory. And I'm by no ways a complete specialist in the real estate price across the board, but these are the numbers that I'm seeing. And what I'm hearing from sitting on the Employability Network, so I do sit on a couple of employment groups and we can go through that further on in the document, but the message is that we need more places to put people. If we're going to continue to grow our businesses, we need to be cognizant of the fact that we have to grow our communities, we have to grow places for them. So I would say that housing is critical right now, and it's not just critical in SDNG, it's critical in Canada. We're facing similar things that we've seen throughout. The Cornwall Real Estate Board, since January, has seen, I believe it's an 18% increase in the value of homes. We're now over $400,000 for our average home sold in Cornwall and SDNG, and that's a big price. Since 2019, our average price was around $200,000. So we were very affordable, and in comparison to Canada, we're still affordable, because theirs is twice that. The average home in Canada is now selling for almost $800,000. But does that resolve the fact that we don't have a place for people to live necessarily if they come here? And I'm not saying that that's the case in every situation. We do still have housing, we do still have apartments, we do still have rentals, but it's a matter of, do we have enough? And it's trying to come up with some of the stats to back that up. The census came out this year, they're slowly rolling out little bits of data as they go with the anticipation that by the end of the year, we'll be, we'll have access to all of the census data. But what's come forward has shown that inflation has gone up dramatically, wages have gone up, but not dramatically. And there's going to be a societal shift in terms of how active are employers in terms of recruiting, and they're getting creative. We have employers who are looking at the option of housing their own employees, of looking at building apartment complexes or investing on them on their own, so that they can attract workers, because some of them are struggling. And that's not the case with all of them, depending on your location in the counties and the availabilities, it does differ. But we've seen that we are more attractive. So SDNG is a great place to live and it is something that is growing. And we're attracting remote workers, we're attracting workers, but it's just a matter of, we also have a dwindling population. We had a BDC talk earlier this year, I think some of you may have seen it, and I had invited in the chief economist for the BDC, and he gave his projection for the next, for the foreseeable year, as well as into the future. And one of the interesting things he noted, that I had not been aware of or heard at previous conventions, was the population bubble that we're in. He said, "Be prepared, 2020 to 2030, you had fewer babies born in Canada." He says, "By 2030, you'll have more 18-year-olds to work for your companies." He said, "2020 to 2030, in the period we're in, the numbers went down significantly. Fewer babies were born during that period, who would now be of working age. And by 2030, it goes up a little bit, so we'll have a few more." But that is a challenge. We recognize that fewer foreign workers came in during the pandemic because of the challenges of traveling and leaving their home countries. So we're going to have fewer population coming from away. So they're trying to make up for that and they're trying to increase the limits. But our population did significantly decrease in terms of workers for this period. So that's, those are elements that we have to be cognizant of and that we have to be creative of with when we're chatting with employers about what do you need? And who are you trying to attract and where are you trying to attract them from?
Okay, go ahead. Then we need to move, we need to move along here. We'll be here all day.
Yeah, I know, we'll be here all day. I just wanted to say, it's not in your wheelhouse, but we also, it's going to increase services too, when you get all this building going on. And infrastructure, I mean, municipalities now are experiencing a lack of capacity in water and wastewater too as well. So we all have to work together. I think we should do it collectively to try and lobby the province and the federal government to make them understand that there's a lot going on in this end of the world too, and not just on the GTA. And you look at the budget, and the budget in the GTA, everything is going there mostly. So they got to open their eyes and see that there's a lot going on in this community, in this region as well. So that's what part of Peter's wheelhouse is, and everybody else around here should be continuing that strategy to lobby, lobby both levels of government.
Just a comment, if, I'm sure most of you saw the transportation survey that came out last week by the province, and it was interesting that they identified the importance of both the 401 and the 417 highway corridors of, we need to expand upon these areas, and they focused, of course, on the metropolitan end, not on the SDG end. But they spoke to the importance of those access points in terms of bringing goods and services and people in, back and forth from the cities. So they've acknowledged, to your point, the importance of essentially SDNG in Eastern Ontario in that flow of goods, but they did not necessarily put their money where their mouth was in terms of investing in the other end.
Okay, thank you for that. Please go ahead with advocacy and business support.
So in terms of advocacy, I've been working with a number of different projects, and sometimes this has been in more depth and sometimes it has been more informational. So I've continued to work with GN File Environmental, just in terms of some advocacy. So I'm working with Mayor Wirt on advocacy in terms of bringing in a renewable natural gas pipeline to SDNG. So it would be, ideally, it would be connecting to the St. Albert Pipeline for natural gas and bringing it to the source. We had had a tour there last fall, and that project is continuing to go through its phases. It would be part of a larger economic hub that would be based in North Stormont, but that would heavily impact Prescott Russell and SDNG if it does move forward. I've lent support to a number of agencies in terms of letters of support. So our office often gets requests for letters of support from me directly, in some cases when it needs to do so, on a more county level. It goes, of course, back to county council for their support. Some letters that I've prepared are for the PARO Centre for Women's Enterprise, which is their PARO Biz Project. So for those of you who are unaware, PARO is a lending group. It helps to work with women-owned business startups. And this was for their letter of support to the province. So they've requested that their organization continue to receive provincial funding, and they are a group that does heavily support Eastern Ontario business. We similarly had sent out a letter of support for the Centre for Rural Women's Entrepreneurs. It was requested by the Business Sisters Group, and they were going after potential funding from KStajarde. I've continued to work with the Southeastern Ontario Production Accelerator Fund, so you've heard a lot about them this morning. That is the group that is working on generating a tax credit from the Ministry of Finance. So they've requested that a duplication of an existing project go forward. So essentially, what happens in the north is that a long time ago, it was actually the mining industry who had supported the Northern Filam Credit. So I'm sure many of you have seen on CBC an awful lot of great TV programming that came from the north. So the goal of this initiative, it's not to ask us directly for money, it's to ask that the Minister of Finance support a tax credit for film industries that support business in Southeastern Ontario, so outside of metropolitan GTA area. There's a lot of demand right now, but as soon as you go out of the GTA, there's a lot more expense associated with filming, because they're bringing their crews farther away. So there's the relocation expense, which is why they're asking for that tax credit. It's been successfully moving forward. At the time, councillor Lyle Warden was the acting warden for the county, and he had signed the letter of support on behalf of the counties. We work with the Cornwall Business and Enterprise Centre on a regular basis. This year, we've signed on as a pro sponsorship for the centre. The goal of that is that, the Cornwall Business and Enterprise Centre, which also serves all of SDNG and Acquis Osney, somewhere between 50% and 60% of the applicants are actually SDNG entrepreneurs. It's funded pretty much entirely for the Starter Company and the Summer Company Plus Program. In order for them to do additional seminars for business, they've set up a sponsorship ability, so we are sponsoring $3,000 this year to add additional programming. And that's directly, as I said, it's for seminars, similar to the one that had been done with Andrew Segay, where you talk about, you know, the COVID funding and how to pay it back. It's those types of events. We are also working with the organizers of the Ontario East Municipal Conference, so we will be a platinum sponsor of the conference once again this year, because they will be at the NAV Centre in our own backyard. We're going to be sponsoring the Wednesday evening gala. So as it was in 2019, when many of you would have attended, we're going to be hosting some music, we're going to be the signature piece for that event, and we're just lining up the entertainers for it now. We've also, as I mentioned previously, adapted the site selection tool on the county website, so we're continuing to evolve that piece that had been enacted when I just started last March. And we're trying to perfect that tool to make it a little bit more effective in terms of doing what it needs to do.
Any questions? Yes, councillor Bywell.
Thank you, Warden. I have to go back a hair on business retention. I think that, you know, it is extremely important that we keep what we've got and allow them to expand. The big challenge I'm hearing out there is that we don't have the skilled labor to do the work. And I never heard about the housing issue, and I'm not saying that's probably important, but we, those who are running businesses, I talked to a business that runs a heating and air conditioning, that he expanded 50% last year and expects to go another 25% on top of that this year, and he needs bodies. And some of those bodies need to go through St. Lawrence College. And we used to have a good partnership at the counties with the college, that's kind of disappeared, and I think that's something, that's a connection you... the college, that's kind of disappeared, and I think that's something, that's a connection you need to kind of keep there, that, see what's going on there, because those bodies need to come to us instead of just sitting in the city or wherever. On, on, on the larger picture, that you were talking about right here now, one of the, the largest driver of dollars into SDG is agriculture, and it's not the local mom and pop stuff, and that's okay. I don't have an issue with those because they generate some tourism dollars in their own little way of, of doing things. But the, the larger entrepreneurs are very fortunate that we have some places to go with our commodities. And, and as I illustrated to you in Farmer's Forum, that, you know, we, SDG is the second largest county on a per farm basis for dollars coming into the counties, and as councillor Wirtz knows, we're, we're very bad creatures of wanting to spend every dollar we get. So, but those dollars need to be first generated and then spent, so, you know, the whole agriculture industry, as much as it tends to drive on its own, if we lose a greenfield, if we lose a ingredient, we're, it'll cost us big dollars, and, and if somebody wants to come in, I know there's always the talk of some small company coming in, and Tri County did it in Winchester. They're the work that is small, as much as the small municipalities can do some of the legwork, it's, it's roles, they don't look at that, they look at the big picture, because they need stuff from everywhere, whether it's SDG, Prescott Russell, they're looking at Eastern Ontario, so not expecting you to do a lot of work in that field, but always keeping in mind that, you know, if somebody wants to come in, want to put a processing plant for corn or soybeans or wheat or whatever, yeah, the small ones are nice, but the big guys bring in major dollars and not only do that, but also provide some employment and some significant tax dollars coming in. You, you mentioned about the film dollars, and some, and a question we didn't really ask or get answered from that, the jail feasibility study is, how many dollars would we expect? If a film stage comes in, how many dollars? And we're speculating, it sounds like a big number, but we're speculating. So that, that's a question I have. And, and, in conjunction with that, the southeastern Ontario film credit thing, how far does it, how broads it go? Is it just to the edge of Toronto, or, because Prince Edward County is going to be the big one, we all know it. And, and you mentioned Ontario East Municipal Conference, and, and so, and that's okay, we sponsor it because it's in our, our jurisdiction. So how many dollars are we spending on that specific line item? Because one of the thinking I have is you're just, you're, you're, you're being a good host to councillors and economic development officers. It doesn't do anything specifically for SDG Cornwall, and that's where I'll leave it. Thank you.
So I'll try and, interrupt me if I missed, there's a lot of questions in there. So I think I'll start, and I, I'm not complaining, but just interrupt me if I missed one. So I'll start with the jail, just because it was the last one. So the Southeastern Ontario Production Accelerator Fund, it's southeastern Ontario as defined by the Ministry of Economic Development, so essentially, it's not the GTA, it's outside of the GTA to Cornwall. So it's the length essentially of the St. Lawrence River running down, that's what they're looking at. So yes, it would include Prince Edward County. The biggest one would actually be Kingston. The Kingston Film Office is a massive engine right now in terms of film. They're filming the Star Trek movies out of the Kingston pen, they're using it for a number of different ventures that they've lined up. We're not expecting to film necessarily Star Trek in the counties, but we've had good forays into groups working on movies for, you know, the Women's Network and for smaller productions. There's a lot of interest in, you know, in coming to our farms and our territories and having access to that. We're also very well placed with proximity to Montreal, which has a very active film industry, so we anticipate that we would actually probably steal more from the Belle Provence than we would pull from the GTA, just because we are significantly closer and we're a more viable option for them. So we do have a lot of options in terms of where they're coming from. For the jail, one of the challenges with the jail, I know it was noted in Lawrence's report, that we were so far underneath the threshold for the funding for the film piece. It's because our bylaws weren't created to include film industry in jail rentals. We have a bylaw in place right now that says you can rent the jail, and I believe at the time, it was probably intended for spooky children's parties or somebody coming in for a school visit. But it wasn't necessarily intended for the film industry, so we do, are going to be working with the Kingston Film Board to better determine how much we should be renting the jail facility out for. Right now, we made a little bit of money off of different productions that have been here for paranormal movies and documentaries in the past. But it was just above the break even, and it was as we're building up and figuring out what they need. But as this evolves, for sure, we're going to have to come up with new costing so that it makes sense and that it's comparable to the industry. To your point about farming, farming, in my head, I do consider farming business. I don't make a huge separation between the two. We have a lot of big business farms. And I'm happy to work with any of them, and I am working with a number of farms as they come through, and I promote with them, I work with them in terms of bringing in the Canadian Agricultural, Canadian Agricultural Partnership Fund, and I work closely with OFA and OMAFRA reps to find out what the grant programs are and to send that out, and we try to relay that information as widely as we can, also to the farming business community, which is what they are. I have visited a number of farms to talk to them about different things, so as part of the regional incentives program, I've been working with Cornerstone Organics, who's been going through major changes. They are a farm. For all intents and purposes, they're a farm. So as part of that project, I reached out to OMAFRA, I found them an aquaculture expert because they needed one. So we had an aquaculture expert from OMAFRA have conversations with them. I've worked similarly with other businesses. We have a new lavender field coming to South Glengary, to South, sorry, give me a minute. We have one in South Glengary, we have a new one coming to North Stormont. And I've been working with the new North Stormont farmers, and they're traditional farmers. They do soy and, soy and corn crops. This year, they're doing lavender, and they're putting in, I believe it was three thousand lavender plugs with the intent of having a lavender field. It's an ag, that's an agritourism element, but what they were looking for was agriculture grants. So we line them up with the ones that are regional and RIP, and you loop in the municipality, you make sure everybody knows what's going on. But in its pure essence, we're helping agriculture, agricultural producers grow and expand, and I'm always happy to support that industry and also watch it for some of the advocacy pieces. So one that I didn't include on the advocacy list is actually working with the OMAFRA reps to try and figure out, well, what should the CAP program look like in the future? CAP is, sorry, an acronym is Canadian Agricultural Partnership Fund, which is the main source of grants for farming, and it lives under Ontario's Ministry of Soils and Crops. So we promote those programs to try and send out the information. Farmers are a harder group to identify. We don't necessarily have a full list, so often we go through their associations. We'll send out information to the OFA reps, we'll send it out to the, through OMAFRA, and then we use social media and our other traditional methods to relay the information. But I also do get direct inquiries, and I'm always happy to answer those ones. And sometimes I get inquiries from, as I say, the farmers reps or the milk reps or the different farmer groups specifically because they have an initiative or a cooperative or something that they're working on. I've lost a few of your questions. St. Lawrence College, so that actually appears in the labour section, so I'm working closely in terms of labour, so I'll, I might skim it later, but essentially, in terms of labour development, it is one of the pieces that I spend a fair chunk of my time on. I have forged a number of relationships with St. Lawrence College, including the gentleman who's in charge of the foreign exchange students. So I've identified that they have twelve hundred foreign exchange students currently at the St. Lawrence campuses. They bring in probably twice that number throughout the year, and we're trying to pair them up with as many of our local businesses as we can. So foreign exchange students are allowed to work for, and it's for all students as well, but specifically this piece is with the foreign exchange students. They're allowed to work here for a certain number of hours while they're here, so I believe it's twenty hours a week during the school session. Plus, they can work summers, and they're allowed to stay here conceivably as high as three years after they graduate. So I've made direct links with that representative and a number of our major employers who are better equipped to handle the paperwork involved. We're also strategizing ways to promote those students to other local employers, include, including introducing, I made a connection with them with the Employable, Employability Network that I sit on. The Employability Network is a network that involves all employment agencies. So we have monthly meetings, and I often meet with them individually if I have a question, but that's St. Lawrence College, it's City College Yal, it's GIAG, it's Jobzone, it's social services, it's everybody who deals with any aspect of labour, and we have regular meetings to look at those specific needs. I also sit on the working group steering committee for RTO nine, so that's Regional Tourism District Nine, of which we belong. I'm on their Employment Strategy Group, which is looking specifically at the hospitality and tourism sector, which was hit exponentially badly during COVID. They received money from Fed Dev so that they could initiate their own strategies to increase labour in those sectors. So as part of that strategic planning, they've done a number of different pieces. They're working on some film right now, so they're going to be doing commercials about the benefits of joining the tourism industry. They're highlighting different career paths. They've done job fairs, they've initiated job training sessions. There's been a number of good pieces that have come out of that. So for sure, labour is a major component of what I work with, and it's on a more much more regional scale of how can we support these industries? I've also worked with the Training Board, so we bring back information, either sometimes it comes directly from me, sometimes it comes from your EDOs of what are you hearing, what are the trends, what are the shortages? We know that we lack mill rights, so I had worked with the Training Board late last year in terms of how can you fulfill this need? We need more mill rights. So it's working with the Training Board, working with the college on micro, micro accreditation courses, which launched this year from the college for things that aren't a mill right, but might support having one mill right, but many people helping the mill right, for instance. So there's a lot of strategic involvement, and definitely the colleges being our local provider is a big one, but there are other labour groups that we're working with on the periphery.
Okay, thank you for that. Please move on with business events.
So we've had a few events. As I mentioned, we had an event with BDC's chief economist, Pierre Clereux. He's had some interesting things to say about the projections for the future. And his goal was that we are going to see what we're seeing now. He had predicted that we would have four to nine percent inflation and that it would recover in twenty twenty-three. He saw population dwindling, but that there's measures in place to increase that. We also had, I'd organized an event on March eighth, and our warden had kindly acted as the host of that event. And it was well-attended. We had Empowering Women in Entrepreneurship, was, which corresponded with International Women's Day. And it focused on strategies for women to launch their own businesses and all of the supports available through that.
Any questions on that? Okay, please, please carry on with conferences, training and stakeholder engagement.
So I've attended numerous conferences, training sessions, stakeholder engagements. As I mentioned, I sit on the Employability Network. I also sit on the Eastern Ontario Agri-Food Network, which supports more small-scale farming and agritourism assets. We work with Cornwall, Aquasosny a little bit, as well as Prescott Russell, our major players in that group, and we're trying to find different strategies to support our agritourism elements. I participate in regular meetings with a number of different groups, including our Economic Development Officers, with Destination Ontario, with the Tourism Industry Alliance of Ontario. I sit with meetings with the province, with the feds, so the Ministry of Economic Development at both levels, including Fed Dev. I've had numerous meetings with the Cornwall and District Real Estate Board, including hosting a joint meeting with the Planning Department, so we focused on strategic sessions involving housing. So we had an EDO meeting with the planners where we were looking at what is the state of social housing and opportunities. And we spoke about Peter's, as I mentioned, the Growth and Population Study in ways that we can all support those documents. We brought in guest speakers from Cornwall Social Housing, which again, Cornwall Social Housing, of course, serves all of SDNG District. And we've also brought in the Cornwall Real Estate Board afterwards, just to find out the state of real estate generally in terms of the region. So the Cornwall and District Real Estate Board covers the bulk of SDNG. Part of our territory, mainly a section, I believe, of North Thundas falls under the Ottawa Real Estate Board. I participated in the SDNG Emergency Management Training Exercises, as well as numerous meetings with St. Lawrence Parks Commission, Cornwall Tourism, Aquasosny Tourism, the Cornwall Community Museum, RTO nine. As I mentioned earlier, I'm working with Karina on bringing forward a shared tourism study. We're also looking at data collection services so that we can, as was mentioned in the report earlier this morning, really fill in some of those knowledge gaps of where are tourists coming from and what are they doing when they're here? One of the things that we found out through the paranormal tours that took place during COVID, COVID was good in that people had to tell us where they lived and how long they were here and where they were coming from. And we learned when we did the paranormal tours last October, so we had, they sold out, so we had a number of events where a paranormal group, it was the Haunted Walks of Ottawa helped us to organize them. And they came from Kingston, they came from Toronto, they came from North Bay, they came from Quebec City, they came from Montreal, Ottawa and Toronto to visit the spooky historic jail. Where did they stay? They stayed everywhere. They stayed in the counties at bed and breakfast, especially if they said they were haunted because that was what they were looking for. They stayed at Cornwall Hotels, they ate throughout the region. The paranormal tours were overnight, so they took place from five PM till about, I believe, three or four AM. And it was really interesting just to see on that very small scale where people come from and how they impact. So to today's earlier point, we are located in, the, you know, historic seat of this building is located in the counties, but it draws people to the region. And our tourists barely, very barely, like, if you ask them if they're in Cornwall, or if they're in South Glengary, or if they're in South Stormont, they don't usually know. We know. They have no idea where they are. They just know that they stayed at such and such a hotel, and they ate at this restaurant, and it was on the water. So we did achieve some of that information, and we're hoping to find more. As I said, I sit on the RTO nine Workforce Development Steering Committee, which has had some interesting work being done in the past couple of months. That was benefiting from a grant from Dep Fed Dev to support that initiative. And I've also sat with numerous other groups, including the Ontario Minister, including OMAFRA. I've attended the Teeny Tiny Summit Series, which speaks to the importance of agritourism outlets as well as agriculture. And I participated in the Spark Roundtable on Business Attractions, so we're working with a group. It's the Spark Centre and the Synergy Labs, which are provincial groups based out of Durham, so they're very similar to Invest Ottawa. And they're working on something called the Eastern Ontario Corridor. So they're trying to bring in foreign business investments from, I believe, over fifty different countries worldwide. And they're trying to have settlement services to help them settle their businesses through the Eastern Ontario Corridor, which for them is from Durham to Quebec border along the river. So there's a lot of, excuse me, there's a lot of opportunity now to attract and retain these businesses. And working with our existing businesses also to identify any gaps in what they need, you know? We have a lot of milk industry. Are there other supports that would make it easier for them to operate their dairies? Are there any other businesses that we can support by bringing in companion businesses that could support them?
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, please move on to community projects and the regional incentive program.
Certainly, community projects. One that I highlighted was just an upcoming one at the Cornwall Community Museum, which is also the SDNG Historical Society. So you'll often see the community museum in there, but a large part of that affiliation is that it is also the host of the SDNG Historical Society, which serves all of the county. They are bringing forward an event on Maylong Weekend called Cornwall Seventeen Eighty-four: A Celebration of Friendship. So I had affiliated them with a number of groups throughout the county so that they can assist in terms of, they're going to have a free event in the park across the street. It's going to be great. On the Friday evening, it's going to focus, it's going to be on Francophone history in Ontario. On the Saturday, it's going to be on the Scottish cultures. And on the Sunday, it's going to focus on Indigenous cultures and how all three of those groups interact in the history of SDNG, Cornwall and Aquasosny. So it's a really interesting opportunity for our local community groups, our museums, to be involved in this very large celebration. So it's not a small kiosk event, it really is intended to be a larger-scale celebration. So for instance, I know that on the Saturday, when the Highland Games are here, they're going to be doing a tattoo, they're going to have the McCullough dancers. They're going to be very much engaged. It's very much a large-scale festival is what they're planning. On the Indigenous Day, my understanding is it's going to be similar to the powwow that takes place in Aquasosny most summers. So it's going to be a lot of fun, and from our perspective, it's less about the fact that it's in Cornwall and more about how can we engage our community groups in the counties to give them better visibility outside of their own host museums so that they can draw more people back to their museums. So we help to introduce some of those things, and of course, we always support the museums and the community groups throughout the year with all of their activities and shared events. From this perspective, in terms of community projects, our only major role in this has been just helping them to introduce to local assets and also sending our students there.
Councillor Gardner.
That was my question, actually, how much of a presence we were going to have there? So do we have a booth? Do we have?
We're going to have our students set up with Cornwall Tourism Students, and they're going to be set up right at the main kiosk gate so that we can promote all of Cornwall and SDNG equally.
Excellent. Sounds like a great, a great project. Please go ahead with regional incentives.
So the RIP program has been very active this year in terms of, we've had a lot of inquiries early on. During the first round of asks, we actually had a lot of smaller asks this year, so we're well ahead in terms of the budget. During the first intake, we had about eighty-six thousand dollars, sorry, my eyes were swimming on the number, that was proposed of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars total budget, leaving us a significant portion for round two. The second intake had just, has just closed, so when I first wrote this report, I said that we had four applications in. It was because they weren't due to arrive at me yet. The total applications for the second round are five applications. And we do anticipate that there will be And we do anticipate that there will be a third and possibly fourth intake this year, depending on the amount allocated, which is what was planned for RIP from the beginning. So when RIP was first put into place, the intention was that it would be one to four intakes a year, ideally at least two, just so that if people came forward later in the year with projects, they would have an opportunity to apply.
Excellent. Any questions on the regional incentives? Okay, please move ahead with Date My County.
So speaking of retracting workers, Date My County is moving forward. Date My County, when it was first proposed to you by Nick Segay, my predecessor, was more of a remote worker attraction piece. I've modified it a little bit just to be a remote worker, but also just a worker attraction piece. The goal of this program is that we're going to be launching a massive marketing campaign. And the marketing campaign is actually, just to be clear, the marketing campaign is the bigger piece of Date My County than almost the recipient, who is the reward winner. So our goal is to make a buzz, let people know where SDG is located, what we're working on, that we need workers, that we have jobs, that we have opportunities. And then we will go through the contest recipients and one lucky recipient is going to be winning $1,500 a month for one year towards their stay in the counties. The individual or family who is selected by our committee will be moving forward in terms of being a brand ambassador. So we will have some conditions on, you know, they'll have to be open to interviews. We're going to ask that they do some blogging and some social media updates throughout the year about their experience living in the counties. And the goal is to attract attention to the worker base and to the worker need. So similar projects have been done in Newfoundland and the Maritimes in order to attract workers to remote areas. As part of this project, we have created a video that is going to be released as part of that main marketing campaign and we're working at the details of this explicit contest details. We'll be having, I'll be going through the original intake, possibly with some other staff, just to pare down those who don't meet eligibility criteria. And we will be asking the Regional Incentives Program approvals committees to actually make the final decision on the end recipient.
Very good. Any questions? Okay, so then SDG's tourism update, please.
And just to note that the SDG Date My County, it will be moving forward late summer. So for the tourism updates, tourism has been very busy. So the jail feasibility study you heard this morning, it benefited, as you saw, from an RTO9 grant to help pay for the cost of that. The SDG tourism videos are up, they are live. So we were fortunate to be able to receive some funding from RTO9. We'd received a $15,000 grant towards that project. We also received additional funds from COVID to support the project. Originally, we were looking at doing fewer videos, but with the support of those funds, we were able to expand the project. We now have three signature videos. So the one that you would have seen on CTV or on our website is the fall, spring, or sorry, the spring/summer signature video with the audio voiceover. We have 10 other videos that are going to be released this summer. They all are themed. They're not, they don't have the voiceover, it's music overlay in those cases, but they do tell individual stories. So they speak to things like our history. We have a video that speaks, and by history, I mean our historical attractions. We have one that speaks to sports in the region. We have one that specifically water sports. We have outdoor adventure, we have family fun, we have a number of themed activities. Those are going to be rolling out through social media throughout the summer. During the fall, our second feature vignette is going to be released. And that one is very similar to the one you saw for the spring. And similarly, we've also done one that will be released next winter time, likely mid-January. We're working with CTV Media, with Bell Media and largely CTV Ottawa and other divisions of Bell Media on that project. So in addition to being able to see it on CTV Ottawa and other stations that are part of the Bell Media package, you're also going to be able to see it on video on demand. So if you watch it with your Roku or another device, the ads that you can't skip that pop up when you're trying to watch it on the CTV app, those are going to be ours. And they're 15-second videos so that you have to watch them to watch Murdoch mysteries or whatever it is that you're queuing in for. So it's a very successful campaign. On the county's website.
Just one second, Tara, we have a question with councillor Gardner.
Yeah, just specific to the videos. I watched the video, it was great. Where's Creative Good from? Because I tried to Google them, I couldn't find them.
Creative Goods, so the company that won the bid for that contract is based out of Toronto, so they're GTA area. And yeah, so we have been very successful. So at the Ontario East Municipal Conference, one of the feature things that we'll be doing there is actually showcasing two of the videos in addition to showcasing some greater elements of SDNG. So we have numerous advertising campaigns for the video series. As mentioned, it's been out on social media. We've received between the county's website and the tourism website, I believe at this point, close to 30,000 views and it's climbing. So it has gone quite viral in terms of getting the word out. Many of our local partners have shared it through CTV as well. We're going to be getting very good coverage. We have the visitor guide coming out, so I believe it's arriving this Friday. We have 20,000 copies coming into the building for local distribution. We have an additional 20,000 copies going out through CTM Media. So CTM Media Group sends them out to the travel locations on the 401. They send them out to hotels, airports, things of that nature. And most of our focus is being the 401 corridor. We have the SDNG cycling map, it came in. So if you need copies, let me know, we have many. We had a 5,000 print run this year and we've actually distributed a lot of them at the Montreal Bike Show last weekend. Karina had attended with Cornwall Tourism in terms of handing out information on the region. Tourism Photography Shoot happened earlier this year. Again, it was part of an RTO9 sponsorship. So they sponsored a photo shoot at the Grace Creek Conservation Area, as well as at the Upper Canada Bird Sanctuary. And it was to add to our repertoire of photos and was, will be used, well, it was used in packaging for the spring and it will be used in future. We've continued our photo bank, so in terms of photos, we have significantly increased it as part of the Creative Good Contract. We also achieved hundreds of new photos that we use for various promotions throughout the year and that we also make available to the municipalities for various functions. I know that the North Dundas Explorer that's coming out, or has just come out, featured quite a few of those photography pieces. We have four summer students planned for 2022. We too have seen the challenges of hiring right now. We have three of the four hired, they're going to start their training on Monday and we are currently trying to recruit for the fourth position. So the two students for the jail will be up and running within the next couple of weeks. We're going to have them go through some training, we're going to help them, have them help us prepare the jail for visitation. And the two of those students will be running the jail tours and managing downstairs. The other two students will be the cycling ambassadors and it's kind of a tricky name. We call them cycling ambassadors. They don't spend nearly as much time as it implies on the bike. The bike is just an engagement tool if we send them to a festival or if we send them to the Parkway or one of the trails to engage with people. We give them training on how to fix, you know, how to do basic bicycle repairs. If a kid's seat can't go up, they know how to fix it. For families that are out for the first time on a bike and something happens, the students have been trained on very basic bike repairs. But a large part of what they do is actually just engaging directly with visitors. And we have them going to, now that we have festivals again, we're very excited that we have festivals again and that we're hopeful that they will continue and we will have a stronger tourism season. If there are festivals in your communities you want us to send them to, please let us know and we'll definitely add them to the list. But our goal is to send them to all of the recreation trails at least once. We're going to be sending them out to the various campgrounds. They're going to be spending some time at Upper Canada Village, they're going to go to the Highland Games, they're going to go to, in all likelihood, Dairy Fest in North Dundas. So we're, they're going to be at the Lost Villages, they'll be everywhere. And we're trying to create a schedule where it makes sense so that we have as much presence in the highest activity areas as possible throughout the summer. We're also going to be tasking them with that survey that I mentioned. So they're going to be trying to collect as much survey data as they can from visitors. And it's nothing identifiable. We just want to know, how many are, how many people are in your group? What city do you live in? How long are you here? Are you spending the night? Are you traveling as a couple, a single, a group? Very basic questions so that we have some survey data we can use. For the tourism, and just to say that we have received funding from Canada Summer Jobs Program for the summer students and we're waiting on word from the province, but we do anticipate we'll get a fair amount of funding from both agencies. For the tourism updates, there's been an increased activity there. Karina has been very active in terms of working on a new tourism newsletter that's been put into fruition early this year. Todd Lee, who has been assisting with that, I've been doing a little bit of the writing as well. We're trying to become more engaged in terms of our tourism out-facing piece. And any of that content, of course, if we're focusing on one of your local businesses, can then be shared through your local municipalities. For the regional tourism information signs, just to let everyone know, if you're talking to anyone, we are about to launch a new intake for them. They happen a couple of times a year. For the SDNG Regional Tourism Grant, in 2021, council had approved a budget of $25,000. COVID continued to create challenges for us last year and for tourism organizations. So we had, due to COVID constraints, we had a few that did not move forward. Two projects funded in 2020 had actually been pushed to the 2021 budget because they were canceled in 2020. They received the funds in 2021, of which only one of those actually was able to move forward last year. The second one did have to unfortunately cancel entirely. We had a total spend of $14,250 from that $25,000 in 2021. The rest of the monies went back into the general budget. When we were budgeting in 2022, there were some delays that were very much COVID-related. So typically, we try to cash out all of the funds that take place in that year within the year. Some of them were late due to challenges related to the pandemic. So our budget was affected in terms of we had $3,750 that had been budgeted for last year's budget that went back into the general budget that we've absorbed into our budget so that it won't affect the $40,000 spent for this year. So just that to say for, that this year, it's essentially we've spent $43,000 instead of $40,000. But the rest of it's going to be absorbed by our advertising budget for this year to offset the cost. So from that $40,000 grant that we put forward this year, we funded a number of different great initiatives, including, I'll let you read through them, but we have everything from smaller-scale regional events to larger-scale regional events. One that's come forward for the very first time is actually the Dairy Fest in North Dundas, which is moving forward. It's their 30th incarnation, it's their first time back after the pandemic. They wanted to go significantly bigger this year, so we're helping to support their expansion of that festival. We have, you know, everything from harmony concerts, which is bringing in a concert series to our vineyards. It's similar to the Teeny Tiny Concert Series, if any of you tended that, it would be a similar concept, to Split Rock Farms Alpacas, which is doing an open house day. So it's a little bit of everything and it's, it's a very diverse group. As many of you are aware, it's the Regional Incentives Approvals Committee that has been tasked with overseeing that grant. So Karina and I work together in terms of preparing the information and all, Karina is the one directly involved with the intake. So she speaks directly to any of the applicants moving forward. Then between her and I, we prepare some of the documentation for the committee and we manage that meeting. And the decisions are made by the members of that committee, which includes three county councillors and two laypeople.
Excellent. Okay, councillor Warden.
Thank you, Warden. I just wanted to say that this is a very, very, very good functioning committee. I think we, we take, we're very fair and we give out the funds. But one of the things that come up at our last meeting was the surplus and it went in back into the general reserves. I'd like at some point to ensure that any funds in these funds that are left over or for whatever reason the projects don't get done, it should be carried forward into the next year, not into reserves. Because there was a little bit of a confusion and we ended up having to give out, we ended up, committee boldly decided on our own that we would give the full $40,000 and the extra money because it shouldn't have went into the full reserves. So hopefully, we weren't too bold.
I think you, to that point, after that meeting and directly to Lyle's point, we spoke with the Treasury and for this year, we were able to absorb, it was a small-ish amount in terms, it was, it was a $3,700 difference. So we were able to absorb that into the existing budget. But if we are able to do the same thing that we do with the Regional Incentives Program and put the remaining funds into a reserve, it also gives us the ability that if we have, so we have the challenge that the tourism grants are for one year, but they're issued between February and April, depending on when county budget comes out, which doesn't actually give anybody a year, because if they have to cash them out that year, they actually have X number of months. So if we're able to put them into the reserve, it allows us to also fund shoulder events to take place in the winter. So it won't change your funding allocation in terms of how much you're spending on the year, but it just means that we would put some amounts into the reserve to carry it over without impacting the following year.
And did you get the green light from Treasury?
For this year, they said that for sure, we can absorb it with our general budget for tourism. So we're absorbing it from other elements, I believe from advertising, just because it is one of our more significant funding sources. But that moving forward, we would leave a note in the budget discussions for 2023 for council to officially have you approve that it does get used that way, just because we want to make sure that it, of course, meets council's approval.
Okay, that's great. Councillor Gardner, go ahead.
Yes, thanks, Warden. Just to tack on to what councillor Warden said. We, we did feel that, you know, you're allotted X number of dollars, that the dollars should stay around, so bold, I guess, forceful potentially. But I will say something about this committee of which I sit on with councillor Warden and councillor Smith. We spend a lot of time going over those applications. And I may have sarcastically said that we spend more time spending $1,000 than we do anything else at this table, with due respect to our residents, but we really wanted it to be a fair program where the return on investment is measured quite highly and also the what's submitted. You know, it has to be properly submitted and stuff. So we're a tough crew when we review, so just wanted to say that.
Well, thank you for all your hard work on that committee. It's appreciated. And thank you, Tara. You are busy. Go ahead, councillor Byveldt.
Thank you, Ward. This is specifically on tourism and I'll stay on that. Historically, and I'm going back to when I was in county council, we, we used to have counties, Cornwall and counties tourism that looked after Cornwall SDG. And I know there were some issues with that and county council at that time decided to split off. It certainly wasn't for dollars, because I know we were spending less dollars, spending a lot of dollars now and I'm not saying it's a good investment or bad investment. However, I do, I think sometimes you got to look at things regionally and, and I do look at SDG Cornwall and I don't go say Cornwall SDG, I go SDG Cornwall, because we are the bigger entity of the mess. Could collaborate more. We used to. I know that the Cornwall Tourism booklet has been out for a bit. And in the past, they used to have some crossover to the counties because we have the attractions. We have a significant amount of attractions, because if you stayed in Cornwall one day, you'd wonder what you can do on the next day. And no disrespect to Cornwall, but there's, we need to get them out and about. Cornwall's in the wrong location, it'd be nice if it was in the middle, but it's not. But this year, they, the whole slant is Cornwall. I noticed that and I don't know where our slant is, because we haven't seen ours yet and it's coming out within the week. I do see that you're going to collaborate Cornwall Tourism on a fall tourism publication and I think, and I encourage that. I think there's, that crossover has a lot more benefits than not. And to work with the city staff in tourism and generating more people to stay here, but them helping us to get people outside. And, and, yeah, they have to go to North Glengarry or North Dundas, which are extremes from, from the city. But they're good day trips. We have good places where people can make day trips and regionalize a bit in Cornwall. I know there's other places they can stay in SDG, but it's, it's a little bit more limited. But people don't get off the 401 to go the middle of nowhere. They see Cornwall, 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 so they're going to stop in Cornwall because the next stop is Montreal. And that, that, the partnership in the, in the, at that time worked not too bad. We, and I see a bit of a splintering. Working together, I think, not only in tourism, but anything that works that, city have strong points, we have strong points. How do we work together and making our strong points work together for the benefit of all? Thank you.
So I love your points and thank you for bringing it up, councillor Byveldt. I think that you're right, like, it doesn't, we can't work in silos and especially with any of our tourism partners. Our biggest tourism partner right now has continued to be the city of Cornwall. We work very, very closely with Cornwall Tourism. They are great host partners. We do a lot of cross-collaboration. Some of them are, are more established than others. So through the Tourism Visitor Guides, they are heavily focused more on our distinct regions, but there is crossover. So if you go through the Cornwall one, it will actually list a number of day trips and expeditions that are actually in the counties. They don't necessarily state they're in the counties, they might say it's in Ingleside or it's here or there. But it's, they are definitely in there because, to your point, many of the attractions live outside of Cornwall. People put their bed to rest in a Cornwall hotel, but they might spend their day in the counties. We're working with them in terms of creating that attraction piece. So we do have our visitor guide, which again, it has a Cornwall section, but it's not the focus. We also speak to Aquasazny and some of the surrounding territory there. It's a beautiful publication, it's similar to Pass It's a beautiful publication. It's similar to past ones that were done. And as I said, you will see it this week. But the intent has been, we've had a lot of discussions of, should we do one, or should we do two, and how would it work? And if we were to do a single visitor guide, part of it has been a matter of, the size could be prohibitive, because they are lengthy publications in terms of printing them and producing them. So one of the movements that we've made is trying to align our distribution so that they're paired more closely together, so that the visitor can pick up two. The goal of the fall publication is that it's going to be a much smaller publication. It would likely only be around twenty pages. And in that amount of space, it'll be easier to blend the shoulder seasons together. And we'll use that almost as a pilot project. Okay, let's see if we can blend a smaller publication together to see if there's any potential in the future or want from both parties to blend the massive documents together. But those are just one piece of what we do. So we have regular monthly meetings with Cornwall Tourism, and those are the regular monthly meetings. I would say that Karina probably talks to Cornwall Tourism at least once a week. I speak with them at least once every couple of weeks. And we work on a lot of shared collaborations. Just this past weekend, it was the Bike Show in Montreal, and the city of Cornwall had a booth. We did not have a booth this year. We were more, I guess we'll say, conservative with our booth, you know, in terms of renting space due to COVID concerns. So we didn't go as aggressively as we have in years past in terms of booking at conventions. The city of Cornwall, in terms of Cornwall Tourism, had very graciously invited us to attend to promote Cornwall, but through their booth also promote all the great stuff going on in SD and G counties. So we have a very intrinsic relationship with them in terms of, what are the, what is the low-hanging fruit that we can take advantage of and start working on these projects to keep moving forward and building our momentum and building back that strong relationship that once existed, that was fractured for a while. But it was fractured during a period when the, the people who work at Cornwall Tourism, for the most part, and those in our own office, were not part of that fracture. They were not part of that divide. We actually have new teams in place in both ventures. The county councillors and the city councillors know more of that acquired knowledge than the staff actually do at this point. But I would say that the advantage of that is that we don't have any of those challenges of what might have happened in past times. We kind of know about it, but it's not interrupting our relationship, and it's not changing how we move forward as a group. We have other partners we work with. So I've been working with Carol Living. She's our great counterpart at the United Counties of Prescott and Russell. And we've had chats about, you know, bicycle tours and, well, your cyclists actually come from Quebec, and then they pass into Prescott Russell, and then they come up the thirty-four, and then they land in Cornwall, and then they pass through the counties. So we're, we've started some of those initial conversations about shared tourism. We also are forging a new relationship with Aquasosni Tourism, which is, again, a driving force behind us. Last fall, it was Aquasosni Tourism who was approached. They've created a familiarization tour, so they had a bus group coming in filled with journalists and influencers. And then they brought in Cornwall, and then they brought in us. And it was just to work together as three neighboring regions to promote the region. So there's a lot of work being done in terms of identifying us separate from Cornwall, because it is important for us to be identified, not just as our, we were previously known as Cornwall and the counties. It wasn't even Cornwall and SDG counties. We were just the counties. So which counties were we? And we've worked on establishing it as the SD and G Counties brand. And I say we, I mean Karina and I. And we've made some of those changes with the RTO nine branding. So if you go through RTO nine or Destination Ontario, you'll see SD and G Counties listed. But that's not intended to separate us necessarily from Cornwall in terms of the consumer-based focus. So consumer-wise, we work with them on a number of shared publications. We're working with them on a waterfront project that would go from South Glengarry through Cornwall up to South Dundas in terms of working on the bike path through that route, just in terms of trying to market it and pull it together. Moving from that, we would likely work on a northern version as well, more towards the forty-three and cutting across. So there are a lot of initiatives, and they're regular, and the meetings are regular. And as I say, each meeting leads to a better forged relationship. Similarly, we have a great working relationship right now with the St. Lawrence Parks Commission, who does own a significant amount of our tourism, especially our recreation tourism and cycling assets. They're not the only asset we work with, but it is important to note the role that they play, especially in cycling and water sports.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from anyone? Yes, go ahead, Counselor Gardner.
Just a quick question. You spoke about the tourism with St. Lawrence Parks Commission. So in the past, folks have tried to jump on their coattails. I'm just wondering what the reciprocal relationship looks like. Like, what are they, what are they doing for us to promote their visitors to go outside of, say, the village or, or whatever?
So they've actually made it one of their priorities this year to be more outward-facing to their communities. So we do sponsor the parks for some of their events. So we sponsor Pumpkin Inferno and a few other activities. As part of our agreement plan, which is being finalized this week, we're looking at a number of features, so we're going to be using tickets for contesting and elements like that. But the bigger feast is that those beautiful signature videos that we created are going to be featured in all of their locations, featuring all of SD and G counties. So we're going to have them playing at the Upper Canada Golf Course. They'll be playing at Upper Canada Village. They'll be playing at the parks, at the actual campgrounds. So we're going to have great visibility in their sites where their people are converging. We're also going to be setting up our students directly at Upper Canada Village to talk about SD and G counties, because we know that if you have thousands of people coming to a single site in South Dundas, it's a great opportunity to push them outwards into the rest of the counties. We're trying to align them with some of the local businesses in terms of they are open to working with them and using their, I guess you can say, their reputation and their coattails. You know, like, there's great aspects to that in terms of cross-promoting other businesses and being more implicated in the community, and we're a bridge for that. So we're acting to use our relationship as an opportunity to take that captured audience who's already at the campgrounds, who might have been coming to the campgrounds for the last two generations, and get them out of there and into other assets. You know, maybe they don't know about the existence of the Cornwall Motor Speedway, which is actually in South Stormont. Or maybe they want to go day tripping and see historic assets or off to the Sunflower Fields. So we're trying to be very active about using that captive audience and getting them out of there, which is part of the reason why a fair amount of the general time for our students is going to be spent on, and it's not all of their time, but we do send them with some frequency to the St. Lawrence Parks Way. We send them to the campgrounds, and we'll be sending them to Upper Canada Village, just because when we send them to, for instance, the Pioneer Museum on a random Wednesday morning, if there's not an event planned, they might see a dozen people versus if we send them to the beach, likely it's going to be loaded with hundreds of people coming from Montreal or Ottawa.
So when we first arrived here, there was a pilot project where they were basically having iPads or whatever in the registration booths at the campground. That I don't think continued, right?
We still have the iPads, and they still have value for the tourism students. We found that on their own, people weren't going to the laptop and clicking on the visitor guide and looking at them, as opposed to, there's a giant TV when you pay for your ticket right at the front desk that's going to play our commercial, and it'll be forced upon them, and they'll see it. So we found that that was better. They're also open to signage, so we had discussions with them about actually putting some signage at the campgrounds and having some, I think more like outdoor posters made to highlight activities or regions, and that's something that we're looking at developing with them.
Those TVs are tricky, only because someone that installed them behind the registration booth, if it's super busy, you won't have people staying. But it's, yeah, I'm just wondering to have, have, has the commission ever offered to have a link on their website? Because that is one of the things, so you do have...
We are expecting to be linked back through them, through some of our sponsorship abilities. And we're also in discussions with them. I missed a piece. So it's lengthy discussions, but also having the students directly on their sites with their permission to use their beaches and their facilities. Like, wherever we put the students, they are literally on a bike with a tent and a table. So we also want to make sure they're somewhere where there's washrooms, and it's safe, and there's parking. So we'll likely be sending them to Upper Canada Village, and they would be prominently displayed right near the entry foyer. And the goal of putting them there, and not all the time, because if there's a fest, you know, if it's the weekend of one of our major festivals, we're going to send them there instead. But it is one of our placeholder places where we know large audiences come. So we'll be sending them there intermittently.
It's, it's great. I mean, there's, there's been years where the Parks Commission did work in a silo. So it's fabulous to hear that they're opening up, but hard to, hard to capture. I think sending the students is fantastic. It's much better to have that one-on-one interaction than it is anything else. So it'll be interesting to see what, what you're able to get from it.
Well, thank you. And just to note that those iPads that we also invested in, they're going to be repurposed, and that's how we're going to be giving out the survey. So the student is going to say, hey, where are you from? And the student will type in, you know, New York City in the iPad, and they'll go through the questions with them, but they'll be used for that purpose. So they're not, it wasn't a wasted investment. It's just being, we strategically pivoted how we're using the tech.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for that. Any last questions? Oh, it sounds like we're, it looks like we're good to go.
Who sleeps?
That was a great presentation. Thank you very much, Tara.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden.
How long do we take for lunch? Half an hour? Okay. So we'll break for lunch now, everyone. I, I think there's pizza, and there are wraps.
Welcome back, everybody. We are now at 6.3 amendments to the Personnel Policy Manual. So, Tim?
Yes, thank you, Warden Williams. I was, this shouldn't take more than a couple hours, I wouldn't think, to get through, so just bear with me. Just kidding. Yeah, so you have the report, starts at page 82. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, I'm just going to touch on some of the highlights. This was a joint effort, I had input from all the directors in terms of the Policy Manual. It's our, essentially, this is the main plank of our Human Resources Management, so it covers pretty much all the terms of employment for our staff that are outside the context of a direct employment letter or the Employment Standards Act. So there's a lot of stuff in there, and I note, you probably have, this document's kind of the base for a lot of your personnel policies as well locally, so, all that to say that it's, it's an important piece. It requires that we review it once per term, so we're satisfying that requirement. I believe it was last updated in the fall of 2018. So, essentially, there's, there's three or four reasons why we do it. We want to make sure we're current with employment standards regulations primarily. Any new requirements that have come out of regulation or anything like that. HR practices and best practices are continually evolving, as we all know, so we want to make sure that we, we pick those up, particularly in the, in the context of, we've had discussion previously, but this morning as well, about how, how challenging it can be to attract staff, and then it corrects or modifies any issues that we've, we've come across in applying the document in previous iterations. So, we had input and then from all the directors, and then what, I want to thank Kimberly and Carolyn, Carolyn McCullough, she's not, she's not here in this meeting, but certainly they, they did a lot of work with me on this, so thank you very much for that. So, I'm just going to cover a few of the highlights of the document, and then we can take specific questions, anything you might have, and I think the process going forward is, we'll take any input that we get today, and with a view to bringing the document back to County Council on May 16th for, for adoption. So, some of the highlights are the, as you'll see, the bullet point on page 82, we've updated the anti-nepotism policy, we've spoken at that, about that a couple of times here at the council table, and specifically, we removed the prohibition on related individuals working within the same department, provided that there's no superior or subordinate relationship involved. So, we have some departments that have dozens and dozens of employees, so it removes that barrier if your relative works in that department, as long as you're not reporting to them, or they're reporting to you, so we've removed that, so we think that's a good change. Relocation costs, that was, we had a lot, it's kind of a minor section, it's not something we employ very often, but we felt that in looking at it, 100 kilometers, you know, it's more than 100 kilometers from Dalkeith to Iroquois, so we thought, you know, if you're, you're still within our region, you know, we weren't sure about paying the relocation expenses, so we felt 500 kilometers was, was a more appropriate distance to determine if you're eligible for relocation expenses or not. The 100 was arbitrary, the 500's arbitrary as well, we can talk about it. It's, as I said, it's not something that's been applied often, if at all, in terms of that. The CO performance review, that's Appendix A, that's new. Again, that's something that we've talked about here at the council table, and the draft policies appended, and essentially, it provides a 360-degree review. So, members of council and then senior staff would be asked to provide input in terms of my performance, and that would all be collated and put together by, by Kimberly, and then brought forward to, to council for review. So I want to thank Kim, she did quite a bit of work on, on reviewing what's, what's, what's out there, and we thought that was a pretty appropriate practice. There's a new section added, 14.2.3 on remote work. Obviously, that wasn't an issue in 2018, but it's, it's now, it's now a fact of life. So, what we've done, we tried to capture a general statement that provides for remote work in, you know, certain circumstances provided there's pre-approval. So, you know, there's a bad snowstorm, or the buses are canceled, or something like that, it doesn't make sense to, to drive to the office, you know, you can, you can, you can work at home, so that, that captures that. Public holidays, Section 18, that's, again, we've, we've spoken at the council table about that, we've added National Truth and Reconciliation Day as, as added to the list of annual holidays. Vacation entitlement, 19.2. There, there's always been a, a differentiation in terms of vacation entitlement between directors and line staff, you know, and I think that's to capture the fact that directors aren't compensated for overtime and things like that, but we felt it's such a competitive market out there, we thought that, as you see in the report, that starting with two weeks is, is fairly, especially if you've been in the workplace for a while, it's fairly, fairly low. So looking around, we, we think that the current standard is three weeks, so you would start with three weeks vacation, and we've harmonized the table for the directors and the balance of the staff, so there's only one table, with a view to saying, if you're, if you're an employee, you're an employee, you should have the same vacation entitlement. So, essentially, it's brought, it's brought everybody up to the, the same standard for senior management. So, we think that's an important time off, and, you know, it's kind of trite to talk about work-life balance, but, you know, that is important, and we thought this is one non-monetary way that we can, we can do to, to try to attract and retain staff. So, that's, that's why we've, we've gone there in the vacation entitlement. Short-term disability, those, those changes are just for clarity, we've outsourced, we don't do the adjudication in-house, if somebody has a doctor's note and it's for leave beyond five days, then what we, we've outsourced it to Chappelle or LifeWorks more recently, and they make, they make the medical determination, whether it's supported or not, we're not, we're not medical experts, so we're not involved in that as all, so we just, we clarified that. WSIB benefits, that's all statutory, that's all outlined in the WSIB Act, so we, just for duplication purposes, we've taken that out, because there's no point in reiterating in a policy what's, what's provincially mandated, so we've taken that out. The, it's called SUB, but the Pregnancy and Parental Leave section, that's, that's new, well, newer, because that's been in the ESA, but it's, it's quite a bit enhanced. We looked around, and essentially, before, we had the bare-bones, you know, pregnancy or parental leave on WSIB. Most employers now will, will top that up and, and lengthen it out, it just, it just provides better coverage for, for staff that are, that are either expecting or on parental leave, or want to take parental leave. We, again, we, like some of the other enhancements, we believe that's going to make us a more attractive employer, especially for, for, you know, younger folks that are, that are thinking about having a family or expanding their family. So, essentially, we top it up to 75% of the salary, which is the industry standard. We looked around, it varies between, I think, 66 to 90 or 95, so we tried to pick what the, what the main was, was in the, in the industry standard, which is 75%. It's not a big monetary value, because, you know, at any one time, we may have one or no, or a few staff on, on paternity leave or pregnancy leave, so. And then we looked at our bereavement leave section, which is 23.7. We added an entitlement for the death of an aunt, an uncle, or niece or nephew, which was silent on in the past, and we added mother-in-law and father-in-law to definition of immediate family. So, currently, it's not, you know, your, your mom or dad passes away, get entitlement, but if your, your, you know, your mother, father-in-law passed away, you didn't get any entitlement, so we thought that was an appropriate change. So, just in terms of dollars, most of these, most of these things don't have a direct financial impact, they do have an opportunity cost associated with, you know, primarily things like vacation entitlements and things like that. So, you know, we've got a very, this is a base document that was in place when I started, and I think we've, we've enhanced it, and we've improved it over the years. I think it's a really good document, and as I said, it covers, it covers all, pretty much all facets of the employment relationship between non-union staff and, and the employer, which is the county. It also covers the unionized staff, to the extent that anything that the collective agreement is silent on, this would be the default agreement as well, as well as any provincial legislation. So, we put a lot of hours into it, every three or four years, reviewing it and making sure it's current, and making sure that it's in compliance with legislation and works well for the staff. So at that point, I, you know, at this point, Warden Williams will be happy to answer any questions or comments or anything from members of council.
Excellent. Thank you for your report. This is a very thorough document, I would say. Questions? Go ahead, Counselor Gardner, then Counselor Warden.
Just a quick question. Tim, for the vacation time, you will negotiate that too, like that, right? I see you've got the CAO and consultation, because I think that's an important piece, right? If you're, especially if you're hiring top, yeah.
Yeah, and I neglected to mention that, it is in the policy, and we do employ that actually regularly. Obviously, you know, you've been in the workforce 15 years, you're not, we're not going to start you at two weeks' holidays, you wouldn't accept that anyway, right? So, typically, how it works is, you know, I work at X, and I have four weeks of holidays, so we, you know, we want them out, you don't want to take holidays away from people, so, good catch. Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Warden.
Through, Warden, yeah, I, I think the three weeks is, it's about time that's updated. I think even in the base, everywhere is three, and I think this is good. We need to attract people to come here, and I think these are positive, positive changes. Thank you.
Counselor Fraser, then Counselor Byveldt.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Tim, I was just wondering, whenever you talk about the, the top-up for pregnancy parental, and 75% as the industry standard, and you say 95% would be at the high end, how much back and forth with your group was or about moving towards the 95%? Because as I look at it, as your comment, Tim, was, it's seldom used in the scheme of things, and I have no idea how many people would be taking it not advantage, but using that, that process. Just, I think of my daughter, and she's, she's in that situation now, or soon will be, and, and just listen to her thoughts as starting a young family, and the, the effort she makes to ensure that there's money put aside, knowing that there's going to be a reduction in her paycheck for a period of time with the added expense of starting a family. To me, someone in that situation would be looking at, if someone offers 80 or 90%, it'd be, I'm going to work there. Because that is of her concerns, besides concern of the health issue, that's number two.
Yeah, and certainly, that's a good point. I know Carolyn, we had a table that we looked at, she did a, an extensive amount of research on this, primarily picking up Warden Caucus municipalities, our direct comparators. Though, I would say the majority of them, probably over 50%, and I'm just thinking 50 to 60, maybe 70% or at that 75% level. There was one that was, was in, maybe that was the city of Ottawa or whatever, 93 or something like that, which was the top, and then some were 60 or 66. Right now, it's, it's, we don't have it at all, right? So, right now, for, for our staff, and we've never had it, that are on paternity or pregnancy leave, they get the basic EI, that's it, that's all they got. So we thought, I think our line of thought was, you know, you know, we're essentially at nothing right now, so let's, let's go to the industry standard, and, but on the other hand, this is council's document, if you want to, if we can certainly increase that to something higher, if that's council's desire.
Counselor Byveldt, then, go ahead.
Thank you, just sort of follow-ups to these questions, this question. So, from, from essentially nothing to 75% on, on a, on a leave of 12 months, what do you think the cost would be for us to go to 75% for one person?
Only cover 26 weeks, so that's, which is standard again, half the year.
Okay, so the cost for 26 weeks, what is, just a ballpark, Tim?
That's a tough one. I would, I would say that any given time, we may have one, maybe two staff on, on, on leave, maybe there's, there's nobody, sometimes there might be three or four.
No, no, I'm not talking about what cost will be, just for one person.
It's hard to say, because it's obviously based on what their, their base salaries, but it wouldn't be, you know, this, this would be a direct out-of-pocket cost. It's hard, Counselor Fraser, for me to give you an exact figure, but in the grand scheme of our overall payroll on an annual basis, it wouldn't be a lot of money, especially if you go from 75 to 93 or something like that. They would, you know, we budget, we budget full salaries anyway, right?
So I'm guessing we wouldn't, we wouldn't be discussing it at, at budget time, it would just be something that would just flow right through.
Exactly, because we budget as if, we don't know who's going to be off on what leave, I mean, you know, and so we budget, you know, X number of employees, base salary, add the benefits, that's, that's, that's the budget figure, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't see that cost directly, but we could, if you want, I mean, we could certainly, I could bring you back that information for...
No, if, if it's not readily available, which also speaks to how insignificant that volume, that number is to me, maybe not to others, but no, and I only ask the question because it is something that is discussed quite often around our house right now, and so it's somewhat top of mind, but thank you for the information.
Counselor Byveldt.
Thank you, Warden. Since Mayor Fraser brought it up, I think a good start at 75% and maybe looking forward, we can continue on going up. It's, to be honest, I don't know where industry standards are, because I've, I've never had to relate to it, so, you know, talking up to 75 is, is a, I would say, a start, maybe not generous, but at least a start. So I'm just going to, I do have questions in the policy, but I'm going to concentrate on my little one in this, in the prelude to it, and that's the relocation costs, and I apologize, I was trying to get my coffee, and I was dealing with a machine that I wasn't familiar with, but I finally got my coffee. Relocation costs, you had it at 100, and you went up to five, and I don't know if you made any justification for the significant interest, increase, but when I was reading through it, I thought 500 was a big jump, that gets you past Toronto. 250 is something I think is more reasonable, I think 100 is not quite enough, because, you know, you can't even get to the city of Ottawa, but I mean, maybe 250 is the right number, and I would throw that on the table, but, and I'm not saying it's the right number, but I think it's a more reasonable way of going from one step to the other, and as you had been alluding to, and I did hear some of the comments, trying to hire, hire employees now is a challenge, and I know we're not, we're very fortunate, the county, so we're not really, a lot of people going in and out, speaks to what happens at the county and your, and your leadership and everybody that works here, but if you do have people moving out, you need to have a, a good package to offer them. moving out, you need to have a, a good package to offer them, because if they don't like ours, they'll go to somebody else. And I don't know what the rest of the Wardens caucuses are, but, and you've done the research, so I'll let you explain that. And then the rest, I'll wait till everybody else has done on.
Yeah, we battered this around. I mean, the hundred, I think, was arbitrary. I, I think, you know, certainly my line of thought was, you know, if it's not that big a number, you're kind of in our, our, our region. So we tried to pick a number that would, you know, if you're coming from outside our region. But I, I, I'm comfortable with the two-fifty. I mean, that would be, what, Kingston area? Past Kingston? So I, I'm, I'm perfectly, it was arbitrary in the first place, the hundred, and five hundred's still arbitrary. So as I said, it's, I'm thinking back on eleven or twelve years now, and I'm, I'm, I was mentioning this to them. I'm trying to remember if we've ever, anyone's ever asked for, no. I was eligible. I was coming from Perth, but I, I, I didn't feel it was appropriate for me to ask, so I didn't. But, but yeah, two, two-fifty would, would be a pretty good radius. So I, I can certainly make that change if council's comfortable with it.
Counselor Armstrong.
Thank you, Warden. I, I think two-fifty is something that could be supported. You know, it, it occurred to me, except I, I wasn't going to bring it up, because you said you'd never used it. So it does, it's really a moot point. But at a hundred kilometers, we're really just encouraging, poaching from ourselves. So, you know, thank God, nobody brought it up. But you, but your comment there, and forgive me, because I don't know your background, but I, I know you do. You do come from here. So were you living in Perth when you came to here? Did you own your property? Like, this wasn't your principal residence then?
No, I'm, I grew up here, but I was in, when I was working for the town of Perth, and I came here. So I had a home and.
Okay. Yeah, because I was, I was assuming when I read that, that that's from your, from your home.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure of that, because I was a little confused. You threw me off there for some.
Counselor Warden. Oh, I'm sorry, Brian.
Sorry. Anyway, through you, Madam Chair, I guess more a comment than, than a, than a, a question. But in regards to the Truth and Reconciliation Day, this is a fairly new event. And I think our municipality in particular struggled with, you know, the holiday versus whether or not this was the best process to recognize this particular event. And I think the counties have an opportunity here to provide some leadership and some consistency, because something of this magnitude, I think, should be recognized consistently. And we're all tending to interpret it according to, you know, different backgrounds perhaps, or host of realities. But if there was an opportunity to provide a, a report that, that the CAOs perhaps could comment on, to see whether or not there is an option that meets everybody's expectation, I think it would be time well spent. So just a, just a comment.
Yeah, and we did have that discussion through you, Madam Warden, with the CAOs group last year, and, because it was all new, and we were trying to figure out who's doing what and, and why we're doing it. But certainly, we can get together and, you know, we, you know, last year, we, here at the county, we, you know, wasn't recognized as, as a day off. But, you know, we certainly did some research and, and encouraged staff to, to take some time to, you know, whether during that day or whatever, to, to learn about, you know, the reason for the day and stuff like that. But I, I think maybe, like you said, through the CAOs group, there's more of a, you know, we could suggest things that people could do to kind of further, further the goals of that day. So I think that's a good point. So thank you very much.
Counselor McGillis.
I was just going to, I guess now I'm echoing everybody else, but I was going to say, I'll, I'll support the recommended changes that, that are here today. Regarding the seventy-five percent for the bereav-, or sorry, for the pregnancy or parental leave, I think that's a, a fair, fair mark. Because when you look at it, you're saving, you're saving, they are saving money from other expenses in terms of traveling expenses coming and forth to work and not to work, you know, or back and forth. They're almost a pooling. And the traveling costs, and also, you know, daycare, things like that, they can be saving money on too. So they, you don't want them to make it more money than the people that are actually working, if you look at that point of view.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Yes, Counselor Warden?
It's different times today, Brian. It's a different time today, and I think that I'd actually be in favor of increasing it and being more competitive, because we do want to attract younger, educated people that will want to stay in here. So I'd actually be in favor of increasing it a little bit more. I think it's a good start, but I don't know if we need to be as high as Ottawa, but maybe we do, because it's not that far. And if it's the difference be, between getting no applicants and four, it'd be money well-spent.
Counselor Gardner, and then Counselor Byveldts.
Yeah. So for that, I think the competitiveness is an important account. I can say, as somebody who interviewed plenty of professional women through the years, they did ask about the benefits for parental leave. And, you know, leading up to even, you know, juggling the both of having the physical change and, and being at work, and also for partners and spouses that would like to look at the parental leave. I think it just speaks to the fact we're in 2022, and it's workplace culture. So I definitely would support raising that up quite a bit. Just to be competitive, because you will turn, you will turn people off if they feel like it's a punishment, right? Which it shouldn't be, so.
Counselor Byveldts.
Thanks, Warden. I'll, I'll save my mental comments for later. I, I hear where Counselor Warden and Counselor Gardner are talking. So, you know, I'm, I'm one of these people that, okay, look at numbers. Ninety-five's way too high. I'm, I'm sorry. I think, right, Counselor McGillis brings up some points of, you know, you're not spending as much money. You're sitting at home. Yes, you have more expenses, because you now have a child, but that hopefully was part of your plan when you started the, the children business. Eighty-five's that halfway point. If council wants to go to that, I, I would agree with it. I won't agree with ninety-five. Maybe that's a debate we need to kind of have that circle with now. And then I do have other points of the policy, but I'm not going to start that till we, you're comfortable with the, these questions, Madam Warden.
Okay. Is eighty-five, is that a good number? Or maybe I should ask the question first. Who would like it higher? Please indicate if you'd like it higher. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, so we want it higher. Is, is eighty-five a good number?
Eighty-five.
It's fair? Is everybody okay?
Counselor Byveldts is good with eighty-five. I'm good.
You got me up, Counselor Fraser. I understand that.
No, I support that. I appreciate your, your, your comments.
Counselor, Counselor Armstrong.
Thank you, Warden. I just wanted to ask one question. I mean, and, and I do support eighty-five. And I, I don't know if I've ever been in the business of children, but I spent a lot of time trying to chase someone who would get into the business of children with me, but very unsuccessful. I'm not, I'm not sure, with, with no disrespect to anybody, but any amount of money that we saved by my, it was actually me who stayed at home for the first year with my son. Any money we saved by me not driving to work, that little bugger consumed in about four weeks. So I don't, I will respectfully disagree with the two gentlemen who said that you're saving money because you're not going to work. But is it a, has it been a problem? Would be the one thing, I mean, you know?
No, it, it hasn't been. But as I said, as part of the review, you know, the, the workforce and the work culture is, is changing. It's changing exponentially. And I think we need to, we need to recognize and do whatever we can to, to make sure that we get the people here, that we, we need to do the job. So I think this is, you know, this would be pointed out to, you know, when, when we hire people, we, we provide them with a copy of the document. We go through it. And I mean, certainly, if, you know, if I'm, you know, someone of, of childbearing age, and, and, you know, my husband or wife or partner are interested in, I mean, that's a question I'm going to ask, right? Because it's, it's going to be important to me. So I, I think, to, to answer your question, I think it's important that we have it. And if eighty-five's the number, we will certainly put that in, and.
Just for clarification, the only reason why I ask that question is because if you said, yeah, we've, I, I know we've lost X number to, to Counselor Warden's point, you know, we've had four people interview, and they, they sort of got turned away on the overall package. And maybe that, because I would have supported maybe bumping it up even a little bit higher. I mean, I have no problem with it, even if it's not a problem. But I just wanted, if it is something you're dealing with, then we should consider higher.
Counselor Warden.
Yeah, I think, I think the, through, through you, Madam Chair, I think the comment we're, we're actually addressing here is corporate culture. I don't think financially that this is actually a, a factor. I think it's more a case of the image that we want to portray. And, and in all honesty, you know, I, I think that that's our fundamental strength. So anyway, just a comment. Thanks.
Well, I, I quite agree. I think that for us to be able to advertise that we do offer a very handsome compensation package is, we can feel good about that. So, all right. So I'm not, I'm, consensus is eighty-five, unless somebody wants to speak against that. I'd like to go back to the, the kilometers. I think two-hundred-and-fifty is the number that was put out. Is there anyone who is not comfortable with that? Okay, all right. So I think we're at two-hundred-and-fifty. Other comments? Go ahead, Counselor Byveldts.
Thank you, Warden. So as I went through the document, and, and I didn't really go through every bit, and I will, I will, I will give staff credit and, and CEO credit. This is an extremely good personnel policy. It, it's hard to find a hole in it. And, and that's a good thing, because sometimes you look through it, and oh, there's a hole. And the hole's the worst thing you can have, because someone's going to exploit the hole someday. Anyway, on thirteen-point-seven, which is the annual structural adjustment, where it says in here as a policy that we will increase non-union salary to the Consumer Price Index of Ontario. I don't know what others do within SDG at lower tiers. I know in South Dundas, that number is brought to us, and, and we as a council make that decision if, what staff get, whether they get that number, or a lower number, or a higher number. Now, I know traditionally, counties have never questioned this number at budget time, but like, your thoughts on it, and if there's anybody else who thinks we should, we as a council should at least have a say at the budget time, whether this is right or wrong. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Yeah, this is, this is something that hasn't, hasn't, I don't know when it came in to this document. It's, it's certainly been in place for eleven or tw- it's, it hasn't changed since I've been here. And I have worked in both systems. I've worked in a system, obviously, here, where it's, it's automatic. And I will note, I believe we had a discussion about it in, in, at the budget time, in the context of just because inflation is so rampant this year. So other years, as you point out, it's not, it's built in, and it's not discussed. So, and I have worked in such, other municipalities where it's not automatic, and, you know, it's, it's debated by council annually or not at all. Sometimes there's adjustment given, sometimes there isn't. So to, to me, this, the, the, the way thirteen-point-seven is written, I think is, is, is a superior system. And I say that because it's, it, especially, you know, in the context of the competitiveness that we have right now for staff, it at least, it at least maintains your, your grids in a competitive fashion versus perhaps, you know, falling, falling behind. I mean, I will note, I think, you know, there was a, quite a, quite a large adjustment this year, but I think last year was zero-point-seven. So I think, you know, if you looked at the average over a five or ten-year thing, if it floats with CPI for Ontario, then, you know, I think your grid is always current. And I, we're going to see that. We're just embarking on the, excuse me, the compensation review. We just had a calibration meeting with the consultant last week. So that was one of the things she asked me was, you know, are your grid, are your grids kept current in the context of CPI? And I said, yes. So, you know, her comment was, that makes things a lot easier going forward. It's just in the, not only context of pay equity, but in the context of internal and external comparators. So that's a long-winded saying. I, I quite like this clause, because it, it takes away the, how do I want to say? It, it just, the automaticness of it just, you know, creates conditions that are, you know, in a competitive environment that are, I think, more favorable to attracting and maintaining staff versus, you know, conditions warranted. We haven't had a raise in three years and things like that. And gets away from the, the hicks, the hiccups in the big valleys and things like that. So I, long way, way, way of saying, I, I, I like the way it's written. But if, if council wants to make a change on it, and, and, you know, back to annual review, well, we can certainly, we can certainly do that.
Any other comments on the subject? Okay, Counselor Fraser?
Thank you, Madam Warden. I think the question, was the question asked, what others do in the, in the lower tier?
I believe some have a similar clause, and I believe some look at it every year, just based.
So there's, uh, we had a similar clause, and, but then with the, as you say, Tim, the point seven, and then the, whatever it was. But five, I think the inflation, the CPI call it was five-four, thereabouts. Nevertheless, roughly that number, and give or take. But to, to the, to the automatic, or to having it established, in North Dundas, we have a range. It'll never go below, I shouldn't say it'll never go below. Currently, it won't go below one-point-five, and it won't go above three-point-zero. So if those years, if there's consecutive years of point seven, it's one-point-five, and consecutive years of five-point-four or nine, it, which would allow debate and discussion at the council table. But those years where it's always close, you never, it's still without discussion. It's going to be here or there, within this range. Just in case anyone was wondering of another method.
Okay, thank you. Further comments on the document? Go ahead, Counselor Byveldts.
Okay, moving on. Sixteen-one-one, which is pay periods. We in South Dundas experienced the year where you get, if you go every second week and consistently go to every second week, one year and ten, you're going to get to twenty-seven pay periods in that calendar year. A salaried person, that number either needs to be adjusted when there's a recognition of that, or as what we have done, we will do in South Dundas next year to, to remedy that problem, is that the hourly staff will stay on the biweekly, because an hour is an hour is an hour. The salary ones will go to a bimonthly pay period. So you can't get caught in that twenty-seven pay period scenario in any way, shape, or form. So you'd pay on the fifteenth or thirty-first or whatever. So comment on just that, because we were all shocked when we got it. But, and even our staff didn't know what happened until it was too late.
That's a new one for me. I, I'm going to have to touch base with payroll, Carolyn, who does the actual payroll. Because I, yep.
If, if you don't recognize it, you accidentally get an extra pay in a calendar year. And it doesn't offset the next one, because the next one, you're back here, twenty-six. And you haven't, and I've done some research. You haven't got caught in the last number of years when I've been here, because it, it, it seems, because I get, we all get paid every second week, and that, that number's been consistent at twenty-six is twenty-six. But we got, as I said, it's out done to us somehow or other, and I'm not blaming, I don't know if there's anybody to blame, or just the automatic thinking got you caught into that cycle. We, we found it when the sunshine list came up, and there were more on it than should have been. And that's what caught it. They should not have been on it. They, their annual salary was less than what they actually got paid on a T4 because of it.
Okay, if, if, if you will, I'll, I'll do some research on that with, with Carolyn and find out, you know, if it's been an issue, how it's been addressed, or if it has been addressed, or, and certainly, that's information we can provide to council. So that's interesting comment.
Yes, it is interesting. Okay, thank you. So that'll come back to us. Thank you. Okay, very good. Does anybody have anything else? Otherwise, I think we've settled the, the, the matters in front of us. And so this will come back to county council to be formally adopted at our next meeting. So thank you very much for that, Tim. Moving right along, we have six-point-four, Next Generation nine-one-one. Mike, you're on.
Great. Thank you, Madam Warden. Good afternoon, council. Wanting the opportunity here, sorry. Allergies, not COVID. I tested this morning, I'm negative. here, sorry, allergies, not COVID. I tested this morning, I'm negative. But I am taking allergy medication. So just getting an update on a couple of topics today. NG nine-one-one's been in the works for quite a while. So just to give a bit of history, in June twenty-seventeen, the CRTC started us down this path by presenting a policy they call modernizing nine-one-one networks to meet the public safety needs of Canadians. The biggest technological change that will happen is a transition from a voice-only to an IP-based network to handle nine-one-one calls. So by going from landlines basically to a voice-over-IP system, the technology will also be able to handle real-time texting. So texting nine-one-one, streaming video, sending pictures, sending personal medical information from your smart devices if you have that enabled. And it also, instead of just using simple civic addressing, it's actually going to use GIS data for geolocation as well. So originally, all the telecommunications providers were supposed to be ready by June twenty-twenty, mobile carriers ready by December twenty, December twenty-twenty for, to provide real-time text. And the current system would have been decommissioned by June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Then COVID hit and basically derailed it, like COVID derailed a lot of other things. So CRTC basically suspended all the deadlines. Then back in June last year, they looked at new deadlines. And what it looks like now is Bell and other providers are ready for real-time, Next Generation nine-one-one by March of this year, and they are. They have set no new dates for the enhanced features yet of the, like the real-time texting and the video and the multimedia. But the current system will be decommissioned by March fourth, twenty-twenty-five. So how does that impact us? The county is the lead municipality, municipal authority for providing nine-one-one to the residents of SDG in Cornwall. From a technical perspective, it doesn't really impact us because we do contract our services to a company called Northern nine-one-one based out of Sudbury to provide that primary public safety answering point. And then all the various dispatch centers that each local municipality contracts with, they act as our secondary PSAP centers. So everything technical really rely, is done and handled by the PSAPs. So we do have two agreements in order to provide nine-one-one. So the county and the city of Cornwall are co-signatories on an agreement with Bell Canada. Now, this is a non-editable mandatory agreement. So basically, it's going to be presented to us and we can't really, we don't have a say. It, and it, it means highly regulated by CRTC, so I doubt there's anything in there that we'd want to change anyway. So it does set out the obligations of Bell Canada and our obligations. But interestingly in there, it also sets out technical requirements that we have to follow. So that, so in addition to that, so we contract out to Northern nine-one-one. And the cost is based on population. So they charge three-point-four cents per resident per month. We originally signed this contract in two thousand and seven, and it's auto-renewed twice. There's a provision there every five-year term, it auto-renews. And it's actually set to auto-renew this year. So it's kind of good timing that it expires this year or auto-renews this year because the Bell Canada really recommends that. There is a schedule in our agreement with Bell Canada that sets out a lot of technical requirements. And they really suggest that you include that in your contracts with your PSAPs, just to make sure that they are providing the service in the way that it's intended. So next steps for me really is, or for us, I'd like to bring the Bell Canada agreement to the May council meeting for approval. We need to coordinate with the city of Cornwall for them to do the same. And then with the stakeholders, so I've been put in touch with the chiefs of all the services at the city of Cornwall to review the Northern nine-one-one agreement and amend it as required, and then bring that agreement here at later date for approval. So on that note, is there any interest from council in exploring options or just kind of let it with modifications continue with the Northern nine-one-one? And that's a question I'm going to pose to city of Cornwall as well. From the people I've spoken with, there's never been any issues with the service. I think we just kind of, you know, there's not many providers out there. No, no, it's very limited. So, and just for interest, just call volumes for twenty-twenty-one. So in total, there were thirty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-three nine-one-one calls, twenty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-seven originated from the city of Cornwall, and fifteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-six originated from SDG. And just to break down, I won't read them out, but you can see on the screen the breakouts for the various local municipalities where they originated from. And then from there, so the way the Northern nine-one-one works, they're the primary call-taker. And then based on your emergency, they'll forward it to either police, fire, ambulance. Any comments, questions on NG nine-one-one?
Thank you for your presentation. Comments or questions from council members? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, you can move on to E O I T C Security Operations Center.
Great. Thank you again.
Thank you.
So the county, the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus has an IT subgroup that we are part of. And typically, we meet quarterly. And over the past year and a half, IT security has been a huge topic of conversation. As you're all aware, there's, there's been a spike in cybersecurity attacks on local municipalities. And while cybersecurity is a main concern for all our IT leaders, it is becoming more difficult to mitigate the risk. We do have cyber insurance, and so does a lot of local municipalities. And this is kind of where this conversation started, in that several of the EOWC members were stating that their premiums were going sky-high with minimal coverage. So for example, one of the municipalities, they were offered a fifty-thousand-dollar premium for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar coverage. And that is just not, I mean, I'd hedge my bets on that one and say, no, thank you. Fortunately, last year, we paid fourteen-thousand dollars for a million, which, you know, I'd hedge that bet for sure. And we are in the process of renewing right now, and we don't know what that's going to look like. So even, even some insurance companies refuse to cover some of the members. So what happened is we formed an IT cloud, a security and compliance working group. So we do meet every two weeks to try and solve this problem. And one of the, I guess, the mitigating factors a lot of insurance companies are looking for is, do you have a security operations center? And that's what we're talking about. And the goal is to see how we can provide that. So just quickly, a security operations center, it's almost impossible for an organization our size to do it ourselves because this is a twenty-four-seven proactive monitoring of all our networks. We don't have the resources to have that twenty-four-seven. If anything, the cyber criminals would be more active at night and during the weekends when nobody's there to notice that your computer's acting funny. So long weekends, I'm, come in on a Tuesday of a long weekend, I log in, I'm like, yeah, we're good. So it's, that's when most of the activity occurs. A security operations center will also help you with an initial assessment and put additional controls in place to mitigate the risk, also help you to respond to incidents should you be hit, and then remediation post incident if that would happen to you. So our involvement, obviously, should we go down this road, the protection would automatically cover the municipalities where we do provide IT for. And we would offer it to the other municipalities as well. Based on previous work, the estimated cost of a service like this is fifty to seventy-thousand dollars a year. We didn't go out to RFP or do anything yet, so we don't know the actual cost, but that is, that is the estimate. And just so you know, this is not a hundred percent guarantee against cyber attack. There's still a chance, even if you put all the best controls in place, that organizations can be hit with, with cyber attacks. But it would significantly reduce that chance and better prepare us to respond. So the-
Is your mic, is your mic off?
Sorry, yeah. It, it may have a financial impact in future years. And I just want to make sure that this is something council is comfortable us pursuing. Not to say if we participate in the RFP and they come back at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, we, we're going to make sure that in the RFP, there is a clause where you don't have to purchase if obviously it doesn't make sense for you. But it is something that we feel would significantly reduce the risk of cyber attack. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Comments or questions? Councillor Bivels.
Thank you, Warden. Mike, you're right, cyber attacks are certainly a concern out there. It seems like everybody, some companies getting hit once a day or more. So the question to you is if, so how vulnerable are we now? Do, like, if we get hit, are all our major stuff somewhere else that we can basically say, you guys go because we got a bank full of all the stuff we need here? Or are we that vulnerable that we, we seriously have to do, do this because we, that kind of system is either nonexistent or is not really practical to do? Like, and this question actually came from somebody that does computer work. So that he has, he does have an idea of some of the challenges you face.
Thank you through you, Madam Warden. Right now, I'm very comfortable with where we're at in business continuity of operations and not losing data. It may take a couple days to get everybody back up and running. But the way the backups we have, the computing capacity we have on our backup data center, I'm, I'm comfortable, I'm very comfortable, confident that we would not lose much data, if any at all. You know, maybe the last hour or two of somebody working. The biggest concern for me is the exfiltration of data. So what happens now is, it used to be where they would encrypt your system with ransomware and you can't access your data. So the plan was just wipe it out, start over, get your backups, you're up and running. Now what's happening is they're actually stealing your data and blackmailing you with it. So saying, if you don't pay the ransomware, we're going to sell it on the black market, we're going to release it. So it, it doesn't, no longer becomes the financial risk. It now becomes a reputational risk in a, in a, yeah, it just, we don't want our private inform, while we don't hold a lot of private information, we do have some. And, and that is my concern right now, is that the data is actually exfiltrated and then you're blackmailed with it. So whether we have backups and we don't need to pay them to get it back, we need to pay them to not publish it or release it publicly. So just increasing the, I guess, being more proactive with stopping a cyber attack is what this will do for us.
Thank you, Warden. So like, just two things have come to my mind. I get, provincial courts, all their docs are within our system, correct? So that's probably our biggest risk of somebody saying, we got all this stuff and we're going to give it to anybody else. Because, you know, Ben's stuff is inconsequential. You can just, you know, unless there's Master Cards, I assume he's not using that. But, you know, that kind of system I get concerned about. The other thing that I thought of as I was sitting here is, is how much do you harp on staff on a regular basis to watch what they get? Because we all seen the emails from anybody even from here, and it looks pretty damn authentic. And you do something you wish you didn't do. And that's a challenge. And I, you know, we all see it every day. A lot of it gets hit in our spam. And all of us have some sort of, of, of security software embedded in our computers, but it's not foolproof. We still get the stuff that somebody says, click on this link and you win a million dollars. But we all know that's BS. But there's the odd one that says that looks really legit. And, you know, and we hear of, the city of Ottawa just went through an episode, half a million dollars just disappeared. They got it back. But there was also another episode where their treasurer actually paid a bill they shouldn't have paid because it looked real. And some of that was just not connecting with staff to figure if the bill was real or not. And that, I blame her for that. But there's some proactive stuff. We as counties and you as the IT person, along with the CAO, can make sure that we don't, we don't get hit. And then us as councillors, who are on the same network, don't get, you know, are well-trained in that too. I know that if something flies around South Dundas, we have one person on staff that will tell us disregard this email. But it's just that education part. And you're not going to get every one of them because every once in a while, you're going to get dinged with something that looks like game-like, oh, yeah, that's good. No, it's not. So.
Comment?
Thank you, Madam Warden. Absolutely. And it's, the common thinking right now is that the, the weakest link in the cybersecurity chain is the person sitting at the desk. To your point, there's nothing we could put in place that will make somebody not click on something they, they shouldn't. That being said, we, we have in the past, I know it's been a couple of years, we have done some health classes on cybersecurity. When we see an email that is illegitimate, we will send it out to all our staff and we will send it out to your staff as well for them to distribute. So we're very good at alerting. There is an initiative we're working on right now in the near future with, probably over the summer, we want to do some, some network scanning, penetration testing of all our IT networks. But part of that too is, and I haven't approached your CAOs about it yet, but what we'd like to do is do some what they call simulated phishing. So you send out emails that look like a real email. But if they click on it, it doesn't go to the bad guys. It goes to this provider, and they will know who clicked. And then, and then we can discuss why and provide that education as well. So there are definitely proactive things that we can and will do to, to prevent that for sure.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, councillor Warden.
Through you, Madam Chair. And I think it's important to note that four years ago, we're probably not having this discussion because we didn't have the expertise in-house. And I know in North Stormont situation, we're incredibly dependent on Mike and his team's direction because of the, that same expertise. So my expectations would be that you'll come back to us with a solution that makes the best of our resources and at the same time balances where our exposure. And part of that explanation, I think, should also include as to whether or not insurance continues to be a wise investment. If we're going to invest otherwise, it might, it might offset some of those expenses. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And so, Mike, are you looking for some kind of direction here?
If I may just comment on that. Interestingly, that's a very good point. And what I see happening now is often the, the lines between cybersecurity insurance and these more proactive monitoring, they're blurring. So you see cyber insurance companies who are now scanning your networks. You have to download an app. They'll send you alerts when they see things not quite right. And same thing, what we're kind of looking for here is a cybersecurity operations center that will also kind of provide, not provide a guarantee, but provide a kind of a cost mitigation strategy for us as well. So you're seeing that, that the lines blurred between the insurance and the, and the security operation or security activities, if you will. Thank you.
So, Mike, will you be coming back to us then with a, pardon me, a formal proposal?
That is the plan, yes. So if council does object, I will continue to work with, we will continue to work with the E O I T C on this initiative and see it through. And when the solution is developed or proposed, we'll definitely come back to council with it.
Very good. I don't see any objection around the table. So I think we're, we're good to go.
Thank you, Madam Warden.
And thank you very much for your reports. Okay. Are there any additional items? Anyone? Yes, councillor Bivels?
Thank you, Madam Warden. I've already asked the CAO and Director of Transportation about this, but I want to bring this up as an item today. And, and that's the, the waste study that we commissioned a number of years ago. And I'd like to, I'd like to ask them to give council a progress report on where we are. And then I might make a comment on, on what I would consider a lack thereof. Thank you.
Okay. Is that going to ban? If, if, thank you.
Thank you. So yeah, no, point well taken. And we are at a point actually where the, the final, the final- the final, we'll call it final draft is complete, ready to, to be presented to local councils. Warden, CAO, and I have chatted about how we want to do that, and I think one of the big challenges we've noticed as we're kind of coming, you know, finishing this up is, of course, this municipal election and putting you folks in a position where it may be difficult, if not impossible, to make some fundamental decisions about how to move forward as, as we get into an election and, and perhaps look. So, so what we've done is we've structured it in a way that we actually, the, the milestones and next steps really will be, we'd like to present it to local councils, so the, Warden, CAO, or probably the, the Warden and myself, meet locally with each municipality, review what the report says, and identify what the next steps are in that, but then those action, those next steps really only take place after the municipal elections this fall. So that was the intention, and we're, we're at that point where, actually, it's, it's, the ball is in my court, quite frankly, and I've got to get together with the Warden and start talking about how that looks, and provided she's, she's okay, well, he'll see us on another roadshow at some point in the next couple of months. So I, I guess, I'll, I'll look to you, Madam Warden, if I'm kind of accurately describing, you know, what we discussed last time we talked about that.
Yes, we did discuss that. We haven't met since, so we do need to get back together on that, yep. Go ahead, Councilor Byveldt.
Thank you, Warden. And I know Ben alludes to the election, and, and, and some of us maybe want to, I go, I guess, clean off the, the table so everything's fairly good for the next council, and, and I'm not saying the next council couldn't decide on this, but this was one, one study that I know we in South Dundas had been looking forward to because of the challenges we've incurred in this term of council, spending some significant dollars on, on landfills and waste, and we're still not done. If you need a, you need almost a case of beer to go through all the laments we have in South Dundas, and, and to be honest, my computer is working on again today, and that's, that's a challenge, and I was hoping that we'd look at it some sort of county-wide or Eastern Ontario-wide solution to this problem that the numbers would at least dictate that it's the right way to go, but we're not there yet, and then that challenges probably South Dundas into making decisions that may not be the best thing in the long term. So that, that's my concerns. I, I wish it had been a little quicker to the, to the get-go and get done, but understand it's not, and I'm hoping that maybe we can just at least get those points to councils before the, the writ drops at the end of, in August nineteenth, and if there's a decision to be made, we're still allowed to do it, and at least either get something done that we can direct staff to do, or at least provide some direction to the next council, because it's waste management in, in South Dundas, and I imagine in every one of our, our municipalities is a big dollar amount, and if there's something we can collaborate on to, to make work, and if, if the solution in the end, it all goes to North Stormont, and that's the best solution, I'm good for it. But I don't know that yet, and I was hoping to have that information by now, and, and we could do it, but this was a study that was going to at least help us in that regard. So my comments, thank you.
Thank you for that. So, so Ben, is the idea then to go to all of the local councils and then bring it to County Council, is that?
Yeah, we, we didn't, I guess we didn't really land on, does it go back to County Council after the local councils, or we do the local councils, make sure all the local councils are well-informed as to what the reports recommended, you know, conclusions and recommendations are, and then pause, and then once, once we've kind of revisit and get back into, you know, a fresh term, that's when we kind of bring it back and say, look, we talked about this with everybody locally, and, and recognizing there's going to be some changes, you know, you know, provide the implementation plan that's been set out in that report, and, and go forward. So I, I guess, to that end, I'm open to whatever council wants to do at this council table with the draft report in advance of the, the end of the term, if, if we want to, you know, essentially see this, the same report and, and presentation here as we might see at all the local councils or, or whatnot, so.
Okay, so we'll sit down and we'll, we'll discuss exactly how this is going to get quarterbacked, and then we'll provide some more. If we need to send an email, you know, an email to ask coun- councillors how they would like this rolled out specifically, then we can maybe ask for, for the feedback if necessary, and anyway, we'll, we'll let you know in a little more detail shortly. Is there any other, are there any other additional items? Seeing none, we've already done our closed session. If there's nothing else, Madam Clerk, please adjourn the meeting by resolution.
It's moved by Councilor Fraser, seconded by Councilor Byveldt, that the committee adjourn to the call of the chair.
All in favor of the motion? Carried.